Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Mayor Pressing?
Here. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, which is May 5th, 2014.
So move.
Motion by Ammons?
I'll second.
Seconded by Roberts. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, that motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? Don't see any additions. Okay, petitions and communications. The first person I have is Bishop King James and Reverend Dr. Evelyn Wonderwood, who do not wish to speak, but are continually concerned about Dr. Ellis's sewer problem. Okay, and then, Carletta Donaldson?
This is Carletta Donaldson, 406 East Brookings Drive in Urbana. And at first, I'd like to just offer a moment of silence just for Mr. Gregory Chu, who we lost this past week, former Urbana High School teacher. And of course, he was a commissioner, I believe, on the Arts Commission for the city of Urbana. So we do want to remember his family during this difficult time. And also to Michael Martin and Michelle White Martin. Michelle White Martin was a former Fighting Illini cheerleader. And of course, Michael Martin, back in the eighties, was a wide receiver and for the Illini football team and was recruited from the U of I into Cincinnati Bengals. They lost their son last week, 25 years old, massive heart attack. So we do want to keep them and especially Aubrey families in prayers. We come up, especially on Memorial Day this weekend as well. And I always like to note that back in the eighties, that's when Illini sports was a part of the entire community, not just a segment of a community, but the entire community was involved with Illini sports at that time. If you could, city clerk, remove, I put on their Goodwin Apartments, the Goodwin University Apartments on my comment sheet, if you could just remove that on there, because I did speak with the developers and got that question cleared up. And then I'd like to know, would the police be scheduling a community meeting, if there were to be one, or the city council on the tasers?
I think the police have already gone to many different churches. I think Chief Connolly has, so we'll have people come to the city council meeting.
Okay, so they did that in the last couple of weeks, the different churches?
Well, before that, I believe. You could talk with Chief Connolly.
Oh, okay, I can do that. And on that subject, we've heard from a small population of the police, including the chief. We've heard from a small segment of the community. And so I think that it's very important, so I will speak to the chief on that as far as having at least one more community meeting to educate the community and see what's, how we can work together on this taser situation. And again, that should involve the entire community. Again, with it being Memorial Day weekend, a lot of us tend to honor all of our deceased, but we have to remember also the intent of Memorial Day weekend or Memorial Day, and that is also to honor and remember those who died during and after service in the military we shall never forget. And welcome back, Ms. Carol McCusick. We've missed you. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol McCusick.
Well, that was awfully nice. Thank you very much. I'm at 1907 North Cunningham, and I wanted to say that I think, I don't, haven't studied the bills enough to know whether I'm for or against, but I can tell you I'm for, against self-strangulation. And I think that Ring Road of Olympian Drive and what do they have in common, the parking lots at Frasca Field and having the apartments at, behind Earth Cycle in the, from Lincoln to Goodwin, they aren't tall enough to be in that location, and they don't have enough intensity of residence, in my opinion. That's for that. With the Olympian Drive, I guess one, I'll try for any complaint, but one thing I think was kind of a, well, tricky about it was you had really a lot of trouble, even at the, I think it was an Olympian Drive website, seeing where the whole scope of it on top of, I thought you had trouble of the world as it is. Of course, I'm not very, really very familiar with the countryside, but I thought that maybe it was like people wouldn't figure out what they were going to lose very well. But it is, you know, pavement is hot, and it's irreversible. It has a lot of energy in it, but then you can't break it up without energy. So I think it's nuts. I think all these things are nuts. And so that's what I want to say, I think.
Okay, thank you. Patrick of 2005 Anderson, I can't quite read your name.
Good evening, Mayor Pressing and City Council. From last week, you remember, my name is Patrick Patterson, and it's nice to be here again this evening. My wife and I are here on behalf of Broadway Avenue residents and property owners. And we'd like to extend our thanks to the city council and you, Mayor Pressing, for the great discussion that we had last week with respect to Broadway Avenue parking and resident safety. We very much appreciate the support that we heard for what we referred to as Option Four, designating Broadway Avenue as a bike route with share-o signs as a long-term solution. We believe that the ordinance that you have before you this evening for approval is consistent with our vision for Option Four and is truly a win-win for both residents and cyclists alike. And so, thank you very much to all of you. We very much appreciate your support.
Well, thank you. Eric Jacobson?
Yeah, I probably should have put this in possible additions to the agenda, but we had another fatal accident at Lincoln and University. And as it happened, I got there, I approached that intersection in my car very, very shortly after it happened. 911, when I got out of my car, I found that 911 had been called, but they hadn't arrived. So I saw the, I saw the unfiltered results of that and the young man's body. I think that intersection continues to be very, very dangerous. I don't know the statistics, but I know that statistically it has been one of the most dangerous intersections in Champaign County. And I think it's a tough one to navigate. It's especially tough to not make mistakes about when it's okay to make left turns and when you shouldn't do that. So I wonder if we could put on a future agenda, a discussion of that intersection, perhaps if Public Works can update, you know, give us updated information on the statistics about accidents there, the frequency and the type. And if we could think about whether there's anything that we can do at reasonable cost to improve the safety at that point.
I'm sure that we could do that, right, Bill? Be happy to talk to you about the accident rates at various intersections and what can be done. Okay, thank you. Carol Ammons?
I just want to say to Urbana Middle School teachers, we're coming to the close of another school year. And I got firsthand, I have a sixth grader of whom has remained on honor roll all year. I certainly want to congratulate all the students for that. But the teachers have done a superb job, and they really sometimes go unnoticed. This week is Teacher Appreciation Week, and I just wanted to send a real thank you to all of those teachers throughout this country, but specifically to Urbana Middle School, where we are in the city of Urbana, for all that they do. They really do a tremendous job and have to do a lot of work. So I just want to acknowledge them for their service.
Thank you. And I will add that Urbana schools are known throughout the state of Illinois for having high achievement for all students. And they also do STEAM education, when everybody else is trying to do STEM education, by adding the arts. So that's where the "A" comes from. Anyone else? Okay, I don't think we have any unfinished business that we're going to deal with. Reports of standing committees, the committee of the whole. Charlie?
Yes, three items. Up first is Resolution Number 2014-525-R, Resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the Champaign-Urbana Mass Transit District regarding the generation of proposals for a mixed-use transit facility and associated redevelopment in downtown Urbana. For the committee, I so move.
Second.
Second.
Okay, motion by Smythe, seconded by Ammons. Any discussion?
Mayor.
Yes, Diane?
Based on a few emails that I've received about this, I just wanted to clarify to the public that this particular resolution doesn't involve the expenditure of any city funds. All we're doing is executing an agreement with the Mass Transit District to generate proposals for a development yet to be determined somewhere in the downtown area. And it would involve not only a facility for the Mass Transit District, but commercial and hopefully residential, retail, and mixed use. So it's an opportunity for economic development in downtown. But this particular agreement does not involve the expenditure of city funds, and there was some confusion about it.
Charlie?
And I should have added, last week I failed to introduce Carl Gannatt, the managing director designate of the CMS Transit District. Carl's on the front row up there. So some of you, some of us know him, others may not have. My fault, so. Carl's here to answer any questions as well.
Does anybody have any questions, or does anybody have another comment on this? Okay, would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yep.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Charlie?
Next up is Ordinance Number 2014-548, an ordinance approving a local agency company agreement with, between the city of Urbana and Frasca International. For the committee, I so move.
I'll second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Last item is ordinance number 2014-549, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance fiscal year 2013-14 for Airport Road West reconstruction. This is the local match. For the committee, I so move.
I can, I'll second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Diane?
This is probably more directed toward the item we just approved, but I did have a question. The agreement that we just approved has Frasca doing an annual report to the state, verifying that they're creating full-time jobs and within a five-year period. Does the city of Urbana get a copy of that report? Or do we get any notification that Frasca is making these reports as required? I didn't see it in the agreement.
Yes.
The city doesn't, the report is directly to the state. If we contacted the state and asked, or if we contacted Frasca and asked, I'm sure we would, could, and would see copies of the report. But we are not, they do not report to us. It's a report directly to the state. But again, if we needed the information, I'm sure we could get it.
Well, it'd be good to know if, what progress is being made, since we're technically on the hook if they don't do it.
Sure.
So it'd be good to get the annual update.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Just one more.
Okay, Mike Madigan?
So just to follow up on that, that's a great observation. I kind of asked last week, what ultimately are we on the hook for? That's a great observation. Can we just put that on the schedule to automatically just request that information? If economic development or someone could just right now put that on the schedule to request, I think that would be beneficial.
Sure, I'll work with staff to make sure we do that.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing?
Yes. That ordinance passes. Reports of special committees? I don't think we have that. And reports of officers? Any reports of officers? We don't have reports of officers. Okay, we'll move on to new business. Mayor appointments, Human Relations Commission, Kevin Bowersox-Johnson?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. And then Fire Pension Board, Michael Dilly?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Marlin, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Oh, no one's opposed, I hope. Maybe they are. Guess not. Okay, budget review and presentations. Community development is first.
Good evening. Here we are again, another year's gone by. And I've got an update for you on the budget and a little bit on our department goals and what we've accomplished and looking forward to doing further. Do have a mission statement, and it's just a reminder of all the different areas that we work in, economic development, housing, planning, zoning, redevelopment, building safety, historic preservation, and our community development block grants. I think you may all know this by now, we've got four divisions. We're staffed with 24 full-time employees and just over one part-time employees. This is our organizational chart with the four divisions. And our division managers are here this evening as well, as Jeff Angstrom, who's our planner two for the planning division. A reminder that we staff a lot of our boards and commissions that the city has. A lot of excellent service provided on these boards and commissions. And we, in addition to these that are listed, we also work with the Public Works Department on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee as well as the Sustainability Advisory Committee. As a diverse department, we also have a diversity of programs and funding sources along with different revenue sources. Our operations are funded by the General Fund, by our TIF, CDBG, home, supportive housing, and other grants, along with revenues from building permits, various fees and fines, our rental registration program, our vendor fees for Market at the Square, and program income from our activities. Something good this year is after many years of declines in our federal grants, we actually had an uptick in the CDBG and home grants. So that was a positive. Doesn't make up for the years of decline, but that's something we're happy to see. And also particularly in 2014, since the beginning of 2014, we're beginning to see quite a bit of new activity and construction and permit reviews along with the revenues associated with that. So these are items of good news. And wanted to, in looking through the budget document, there's one table early in the budget that talks about the fund balances for the current year that we're in, and I just wanted to point out a few items there. We've done very well on the General Fund, maybe not for the best reason, and that's because we've had so many vacancies in community development. So those salary savings have saved the city something on the order of $100,000 in this current year that we're in. We're making progress in the staffing area. We have a code enforcement coordinator who started in May. His name is Oliver Marquez, and hopefully you all can meet him and speak with him. He's doing a fine job so far. We also will be welcoming new planning staff in June. We have a planning manager set to start June 9th. His name is Mike Schwartz. He's coming to us from Davenport, Iowa. And we have a planner two set to start June 2nd. His name is Kevin Garcia, and he's coming to us from Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission. Also today, we welcomed a recent graduate of the University of Illinois who will be working full-time this summer as a planning intern. So we're beginning to be able to staff back up. We've already begun our search for a new economic development manager. This will be Tom's last meeting. He'll be relocating in just a matter of days. We still have an open search for the planner one, and we've started a search for a housing inspector as well. Some other items in the current year fund balances, I've been meeting with Rich on a regular basis. There's some balance corrections that we'll be following up on, one on the Fairlon repayment fund. There's some older year carryover that needs to be reinstated, and that will probably come to you in the form of a budget amendment. But the anticipated expenses will bring that budget back into the black, so that should not be shown in deficit. Similarly, with CDBG, there were some duplicate postings that will be corrected, and that will bring that back into the black rather than the red as well. And I promised Rich that we'll be working together in the next year to take a hard look at the ED Reserve Fund. That's a fund that covers a lot of different activities in the city, but doesn't have a regular revenue source. So we'll be working together to rectify that. Okay, looking at next year, the proposed budget for community development in our general fund budget, we are proposing about just over $1.7 million. This is an increase of about $65,000 from our 1314 budget of $1.6 million. And this is owing largely to the addition of the code enforcement coordinator position that we talked about last year. Also would provide for about $15,000 to add an automated system for inspections to achieve better efficiencies there. And we've been working with the IT Director on identifying good systems that will help us. How are we going to accomplish this change? Well, we talked previously about the increases in the rental registration fee, and those have already gone into effect. And also, we've reallocated some of our economic development staffing budget away from the General Fund to help to bring that into line. We've also, in the proposed budget, made some minor line item adjustments, and these are based on expenditure patterns from the past year. And I have to compliment the Finance Department that the new system really is much easier for the users to work with in that regard. So we're looking forward to that. And also making any necessary adjustments for longevity, insurance, et cetera. We're holding the position vacant from last year. You'll recall that Connie Eldridge, our longtime administrative assistant in Grants Management, retired. And we'll be holding that position vacant for the foreseeable future. And I want to give a shout out to Jen Gonzalez, who has taken on those administrative duties in addition to acting as administrator for our home programs, one of our more complicated grant programs. Also, in working with Finance, we will be looking ahead to do some planned reductions in the General Fund overhead charges that are charged against the grants programs. Simply do not have the ability in those CDBG and home funds to have additional overhead charges. So we're looking at a reduction. We would not be able to have the staff that we have now or to run the programs that we have now if the General Fund continues to charge significant overhead. However, that's still, that will still be occurring this year. And I would note too that the grant staff do participate in a number of items that are not covered by the grants programs, such as the Consolidated Social Service Funding Administration. So that will be a work in progress. Also, in response to suggestions and requests by council members, we've, I think we've achieved better clarity in the budget on separating out the Market at the Square and the public art programs so that you can see the true costs and expenses and revenues of those programs. We are adjusting the Market at the Square budget so that we're reflecting that portion of the manager's salary directly to the program and also reducing the administrative overhead charges. We've been in a spend-down pattern for Market at the Square because they did have a surplus. And I think it's time now to show the adjustment so that we can run the program on its revenues each year would be the goal. Also, we've adjusted the public art budget to reflect more realistic fundraising expectations. And also, that has been revised to reflect just the activities of that program. In the General Fund budget, we're continuing to show funding of membership organizations such as the Urbana Business Association, the Economic Development Corporation, Regional Planning Commission, and KUATs. However, we'll be working with all these organizations to work on some better controls and some different agreements. For example, the Urbana Business Association will be coming to council in one of the next committee meetings with a new form of contract, which will be more performance-based and will involve matching funds as well as a plan to reduce the reliance of the Urbana Business Association staff on the city contributions, as an example. And the mayor and Tom and I met with the Economic Development Corporation staff recently to talk about, you know, their contribution. And we expect that that would be, also begin to be performance-based, and we probably would be at a partial level for this year. Another correction I wanted to point out in TIF 4, and Rich will be following up on this, for the Urbana Park District. They do have projects that are funded out of TIF 4. And so that amount is shown in the budget as zero. It should be $128,100. So that will be a correction. Some other items on TIF for the next budget is we'll be beginning to study our downtown TIF because our TIF 2 will be expiring in 2016, and that's really too soon to do long-term planning for redevelopment of the downtown. So it's time to study the future of TIF in the downtown and to look potentially at establishing a new and updated TIF district, setting a new baseline, which we know our other agencies will be thankful for that look again. And we can look at exactly which areas of the downtown still need that redevelopment assistance that TIF can provide. I would note, in terms of the TIF, that we have, still have funds available for the programs that we conduct and for the business assistance and for redevelopment assistance. However, we're pretty well tapped out on capital improvements. We've undertaken and budgeted significant capital improvements in the downtown, for example, the Boneyard Creek Project, Main Street improvements, Broadway, Race Street, you know, necessary expenditures, large expenditures for the TIF. And in TIF 4, Airport Road, will be a large expenditure. But we do continue to have the funds for the programs and the staffing and the economic development efforts, just not as much for the capital improvements. Another point in terms of economic development, we're being required by the state to actually reapply for the Enterprise Zone. This gives us an opportunity to evaluate what will be the best use of the Enterprise Zone for Urbana. We hope that we can work with Champaign County on the program. City of Champaign will also be reapplying, and we're coordinating with them. Gives us an opportunity to attain some of the administrative costs of running the program that we have not done previously. And again, looking at diversifying our revenues and our expenses gives us that opportunity. Okay. I'd like to switch now and just do a quick update for the four different divisions. Starting with economic development, and I just can't say enough about the debt we owe to Tom Carino. He's been with us for eight years as economic development manager. This is his last council meeting, and he's just done a terrific job and provided terrific service to the city. And the division has just gotten so much done this year. We're really pleased with the activity. They've continued to market Urbana to residents and visitors, and that would be under the leadership of Natalie leadership of Natalie Kenny Marquez. We've participated in so many ribbon cuttings, and I know many of the council members are able to come and attend those as well. We've provided significant business assistance. These are small grants. We work with the Urbana Business Association on the ribbon cuttings. We work with the EDC and the Small Business Development Corporation in particular on the business assistance. We've had great success in the downtown redevelopment projects, cake design projects, those three projects. We are poised to have a good movement on the Block North. That's something that's exciting. We've got some great opportunities there. We're seeing build-out of Gateway Shops. The agreement that was just passed tonight with MTD positions us for further redevelopment in the downtown, and we're seeing really the lowest vacancies and the highest levels of activity in the downtown and in Lincoln Square than we've seen in many years. And we've also continued to see success along Philo Road, the Pines at the Commons area in particular. Gregory Place has also begun to fill out and create a vibrancy there in that part of the campus, and we're seeing, you know, great development prospects along University Avenue, too. So we have healthy commercial corridors, our programs. I know you've seen some excellent presentations recently on Market at the Square. We're off to a great start this year, and recently you've heard a presentation on the public arts program. Some images for economic development, beautiful picture of our Main Street, our precious Main Street. I've seen this image repeated in a lot of publications lately. I think it's just, it's just a lovely image. And here's our Block North summary of our center programs that Brandon Boys and Kate Ferrer run for the city, and this is Pandemonium, Pandemonium pop-up shop with the donuts that we had lines around the block for that particular activity. And these are just a few of the new businesses that have opened in Urbana this past year, some that have really created a lot of buzz and just a lot of fun, fun things going on in the downtown, and maybe kind of a new generation, if you will, would be the Cafeteria and Company with Cake Development and Pizza M, and Colab, which is the co-working space. And I believe they were pretty well out of the Colab space. We have another ribbon cutting later this week for another organization that will be located there. Special events, very important for Urbana, and I know that there's more we can do to make those work for everybody in our downtown, but we're having more and more of these. I think you'll see in the budget, one in particular, that the council has embraced in the council goals, we'll be funding and working alongside on a matching basis with the Folken Roots Festival. And so Lisa Hachidori, our public arts coordinator, will be doing that for us. Images from Market at the Square, always great pictures of crowds and colorful things going on at the market, and just some recent, more recent images of our public arts program. Moving on to building safety, and John Schneider is here with us tonight, our manager. We're preparing our annual report. This is a calendar year report for 2013, and these are the numbers before the first of the year, about 200, I'm sorry, 360,000 in the general permit revenues. We had 16.8 million in new construction and 13.5 million in remodels and additions for total of just over 30 million, and that's very close to what we had in 2012. However, as I mentioned, we're seeing quite an uptick of activity since 2014. We had 15 single-family and 64 multifamily unit permits issued. We conducted almost 6,000 inspections by our staff, both the housing and the building inspectors. We registered almost 10,000 rental units, and that has also increased. We've continued to coordinate code enforcement with fire and police, Public Works, and under the leadership of the executive department, the mayor and city attorney continue to do that on a weekly basis, and we continue to focus our efforts on those problem properties and vacant properties. We increased the use of non-compliance tickets. Seems to have really worked in getting compliance and created at least a small revenue source as well. Here are some of the revenues since the fiscal year, and I've done a comparison just to show you that we're running above the variance of where we would be at this time of year for the fiscal year. And, you know, just to show you, we've had some, some healthy permit activity, especially in the plan review fees. Those have gone up quite a bit. Rental registration fees running at 126%, just over 275,000. So roughly 56,000 of that has been an increase that will help to pay for the code enforcement coordinator. And the failure to comply tickets, 7,300.
Just to clarify, if we see 137% variance, that means 37% increase?
Yes, where we, where we were, where we would expect to be, you know, given the budget at this time, we're heading towards the end of the, end of the fiscal year. So we're running above projections. We do project conservatively, though, so, you know, we never want to come short, so we do project conservatively. But even still, I thought this was worth bringing to your attention. Here's some images of buildings that have gone up this past year. There were others, but these were the ones that we felt, felt were very illustrative of the activity. Moving on to planning, and we also track these on a calendar year basis, and I would say we had something of a skeleton staff this year with the, really want to send a shout-out to Jeff Engstrom, who has been our sole planner for much of the year and done a superlative job, keeping all the cases going, all the commission and board meetings going, and assisted by Terry Endel. We also had Rebecca Nathanson, who was a planning intern with us for part of the year. So during this year, we had 20 planned cases, one zoning board, and three landmark cases. Probably would have more cases with the higher staffing. We would have more staff-initiated projects. Some of the major approvals that have gone through the Plan Commission and Zoning Board have been the Clark Lindsey Villas, the revision to Verden Prairie's South Winds Recycled Asphalt, and tonight you'll be hearing about the Campus Circle project. We've worked on projects with the COATs and RPC, including the Bicycle Plan Update, Greenways Plan, and the Long Range Transportation Plan. We've worked with the, one of our planning interns, Aaron Bond, has worked on a neighborhood needs assessment for the Learman neighborhood. It's been a two-semester project, and he'll be coming to you next week to give you an update on his progress there. He actually graduated yesterday with his master's in urban planning, and he is sticking around another week or so to finish up this project, so we're really thankful to Aaron. And I know there's at least four council, maybe more council members have participated in one of the many events that have been held. There's been a survey and a workshop and a charrette that Aaron has conducted for us. Two of our former planning staff were recognized by Preservation and Conservation Association with Lifetime Achievement Awards. That was Robert Myers and Rebecca Byrd. Just FYI, I've been asked to be a member of the Local Leaders Council for Smart Growth America, and it's been a great group to work with other leaders across the U.S., and it's also fitting because we've done so well in the sprawl index that was recently published. Some things that we want to complete with our increased staffing, things that are in the council goals, things that we want to get done would be rezoning to reflect the flood mapping, remapping along the Boneyard. We've talked about reviewing the billboard regulations, updating our subdivision ordinance, developing design guidelines for downtown. There's many, many other projects that we want to complete with our new planning staff, and you'll see many of those in the council goals that you've been working on. Moving on now to grants management, and Kelly Markowski is here tonight. The, and you've seen some of this information already recently in the annual action plan, which was recently adopted, but we did have the uptick in the home program, up 9%, 754,000 from HUD, and we also have substantial carryover from previous years that we'll be looking at some additional home projects this year as a result. CDBG, we were up 4%, will be at 386,000. Again, it's really probably half of what it was when I first started with community development, and that program is run by Janelle Hardy very aptly, and I want to thank Janelle and Kelly in particular for finding new grant funds this past year. They were sought out and were awarded significant grants from Federal Home Loan Bank for two projects and also Emergency Solutions Grant. So those have been added to our grants portfolio. Some of the 1415 programs identified in the annual action plan are continued support just for $5,000 from CDBG for social service funding, emergency and access grants, senior repair service, property acquisition. I think the whole house is also part of this. We continue to run the transitional housing units. Janelle Hardy runs that program, and that some years ago was run by an additional staff person, so the staff continue to double up and to expand their repertoire. Very thankful for that. We had a very successful neighborhood cleanup this last weekend, and that's a project that Randy Burgett runs for us twice each year in the target areas. Some things that grants management has been involved in this past year, and some will continue into the next year, would be the joint planning effort for the Urbana Town Homes and the Aspen Court redevelopment, working along with the Housing Authority. With Public Works, we completed a very major streetlight, streetlight project in northwest Urbana, major capital project, and that was funded with CDBG. We use CDBG also to fund for, fund a pathway connection in the Learman Amvets neighborhood to connect Lenore and Adams. Beautiful, beautiful walkway designed by our Arbor Division and also constructed with Public Works. Hamilton on the Park was completed, Housing Authority project with 36 units in north Urbana. We continued the garden lease for the Learman/Washington Community Garden. We continue to work with Bryn Shore and Homestead on seeking funding for the Kerr Avenue site. We worked with Neighborhood Alliance, which is the Homestead and Homestead, Neighborhood Alliance's habitat, and we had five, five home builds this year. We had 31 whole-house rehab, emergency, and senior grant families benefit this year. We continue to run our transitional and supportive housing programs. We serve 580 homes with neighborhood cleanup, and we administer the Consolidated Social Service Funding. Here's some images of some of the activities of grants management, beautiful new streetlights, beautiful pathway here, this great aerial view of the garden, and just some of the activities with the Learman Garden, and some of, some of the other activities, Hamilton on the Park, and some of the repair and access and whole-house grants that we do. Okay, just finishing up, goals for this year coming up. We want to fill the staff vacancies. We want to work with you to complete those council goals. We'd love to get things done in community development. We love to fill up the packets and move along, and with the new staffing, we'll be able to do a better job on that. We want to work with the council and the community to help build Urbana's tax base. We want to continue to market Urbana to residents and visitors, continue to implement our downtown plan, redevelop important sites such as the Block North of the city building, the Hanford Site, and other sites we're making progress on. We want to continue to beautify our commercial corridors. We want to continue the vibrancy of the Market at the Square and the public arts programs. As I mentioned, we'll be doing some studying of our downtown TIF and our enterprise zone. We'll continue, of course, with our partners on the coordinated problem properties efforts. We have a great opportunity to redevelop the Urbana Town Homes in Aspen Court. Just by the way, we have demolition bid packets issued and accepted, and so the remainder of the Urbana Town Homes should be, should be history in just a matter of weeks. So that's something that we all work together on, and the council was very helpful in helping to find the funds to get that done. We'll be working with our team to address the property issues that we've experienced in the Silverwater area. We'll continue to work with our neighborhood groups, including ELNAC, SUNA, Ucap, Amvets, other neighborhoods, keep working on the Kerr Avenue project, update our subdivision code, and assist on addressing, and I put Carl, but really we have other tax losses to address, including presence in the university. Just, you know, it's part of building our tax base and recognizing that we do have quite a bit of property in Urbana, something like 28% that's tax exempt, so we need to take extraordinary efforts to respond to that. So that concludes my presentation. I do want to note that I'm about to take an exciting trip. I'll be the incoming president of the Urbana Rotary Club, and on their behalf, I'll be going to a Rotary convention in Sydney, Australia. I'll be leaving this Friday and also taking some vacation. However, I will be available by email, and as we come through the next meetings, I'm happy to Skype in, and John Schneider will be here and will be in attendance at all the upcoming meetings as well. Any questions or other items?
I would like to just thank you for all the staff work. I'm Tom Carino. I think really the downtown has been transformed as well as Philo Road and then Five Points. That's all happened in the last few years, and we were able to do this even though there was a big recession going on. I mean, our budget was hurt, but we kept on moving and getting new businesses, so that's really good. And on the question of the goals, I'm going to be proposing to the council that our goal should be to have the tax rate equal to the City of Champaign. We've done it for the city tax rate, and I think we need to do it for the schools in the Park District. We're about 120 million short of where we need to be. If we added Carl, that would be 77 million, and maybe, maybe we're talking about billion, I think, sorry. And presence would be another 13, so we'd be up to 90, so we'd have like 40, 40 billion to go. This is just on raising the assessed value. That's what we would need to have an equal tax rate for everything. Do we have questions or comments? Yes, Eric?
I'd like to make a comment about how well I think you all have administered and implemented TIF districts, because we have, from time to time, had people come in here and really slam us about TIF. And, and there are other jurisdictions around the country where TIF has gotten a bad name because there is a potential for abuse and favoritism to developers, and, and I think that Urbana TIF implementation has really been for the benefit of the entire community, and of course, that's, that's your department that has implemented that, so I, I would like to take the opportunity to publicly mention that particular point.
Thank you. Dennis?
Let's continue the good words. I wanted to mention how much I appreciate community development's participation in what I would call the real transformation of the Learman neighborhood area from being one of the most areas of deepest concern for safety, public safety, and an area that experienced so many police calls in the past, and the support not only to improvements of a material kind on the ground, allowing the, the purchase of the property on the corner of Learman and Washington and the development of the park, and, well, the garden, the community garden, which is going to be, it's starting its second full year of operation, and we're doing our first harvest tomorrow afternoon, actually tomorrow morning. So we already, we already have plants in the ground, and we're actually going to be passing out foods to the neighbors in support of their health and lifestyle. And, you know, and this also includes time, staff time at many meetings, which sometimes do seem a little bit tedious as we go through the details of the programs that are being instituted and the details of the garden itself and how it's managed. You know, this also includes the outreach in the community and the, the multi-use path that was created between Amvets 2 and Learman neighborhood. So I just want to recognize that without the, you know, besides doing the TIF district and economic development, community development department bears the, really the heartstring of the city in many ways, and it's greatly appreciated, you know, not only the, the grants, the grants that we're able to do for the community at large, but for the specific help that we give to the individual neighborhoods is very important.
Diane?
I have a comment and a question. The comment is, I'm really happy to see the funding for the The comment is, I'm really happy to see the funding for the Economic, Champaign County Economic Development Corporation included in this budget at its, at its level from last year. I serve as the council rep to the EDC and I've just been tremendously impressed by what they've been able to accomplish despite the, you know, turnover in leadership at the top. The, the staff at the EDC is terrific. They recently brought thirty full-time jobs to downtown Urbana located in County Plaza and I know the Small Business Development Center has worked very closely with a bunch of Urbana entrepreneurs in the last year to help, to help them as well. So, so I think our investment in the EDC is, is well-placed and I'm glad to see that it is continuing and under the leadership of Craig Ross, I think we're going to see really great benefits to Urbana. So my, and then my question is, I'm really happy to see that there's going to be an automated inspection system and I know our council goals mentioned that you'd be coordinating with the fire department on the inspection automation. Is that, is this system going to be one that's compatible with what they use and how's that going to work?
It will be a different system that will accommodate our needs, but I think that there's always the opportunity to connect the two. Sanford Hess has done research for us and identified a couple of different vendors that will serve our needs in community development since we'll both be automated and have access to each other's documents, that will really enhance that.
Oh, so you will be able to at least?
Yeah.
See each other's?
Yeah, they're two different programs, but they'll be able to connect and Firehouse continues to be a great module for the fire code and we'll be looking at something similar that's for building safety and community development.
And they're compatible?
Yep.
Okay. And then the last is, I know residents in my ward are very anxious about the Silver Street, condemned properties on Silver Street and what the next steps are, so they'll be very anxious to hear what the plans are and we'll, I'm sure we'll learn about those at the SUNA meeting, which is this Wednesday at seven o'clock at Yankee Ridge Gymnasium. I forgot to announce that. Thanks. Thank you.
Just in response to your question on the coordination, what we'd like to do is have it so that you could look up a property and see all the contacts with the city, the police department, the fire department and CD, because a lot of times when there's problems in one area, there's going to be problems in the other area. But this is a long-term project, you can't just do it, unfortunately.
Will this, will this system build twice?
Yes, right. But that's our ultimate goal, is that you'd be able to see where the problems are.
GIS-based type thing, yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much for a very thorough report. Yes, oh, Mike Madigan, sorry, go ahead.
All right. Hey, let me, just a couple of things. First of all, I, I just want to add to the kudos to Tom Carino. I think he's done a tremendous job. As I've said before, I think you folks in economic development, it's a tough job and you do a very good job. Specifically though, what is the cost to your department to participating in the social service funding process? What, what, in real dollars, what is the cost?
Coming out of, CDBG is, it's been reduced because of our grant reduction, so it's five thousand dollar allocation from CDBG. The other funding is general fund and township, significant funding. Terms of staff time, I would need to crunch the hours on that. It's a portion of, you know, a good portion of Janelle Hardy's time just during part of the year. She does many, many other programs, so I could certainly talk to her and see, you know, each year, how many hours do you think is dedicated towards that?
Well, I hate to add to your burden, but if you could, I, I would really appreciate seeing a, kind of a breakout of fund by fund, line by line, well, not line by line, just fund by fund, what the cost to your department is.
For the social service funding?
Yes, please. Okay, and then my second question would be, what would the savings be to, to funds, to funds that are locally generated if the public art program was put on hiatus for a year?
That would come out of our TIF funds. So, and I would say round numbers, it would be the salary, which would be maybe, including some benefits, maybe sixty thousand and the grants to the local artists, which would be on the order of forty thousand, so we're talking a little over a hundred thousand. I, I, you know, I think that I would certainly be concerned about the staff person in particular. I think on the TIF districts, that's why I said we can continue our programs, however, we do need to study TIF long-term and, and I included the public arts in that assessment. So, I don't know if that answers your question, so.
So in other words, there's going to be an overall look at TIF and whether or not where public art would be in terms of priorities in terms of TIF?
No, we'll be looking at the future of the downtown TIFs. But I think overall, we do need to be aware of the reliance of these programs on TIF. I think that's something that we're very concerned about and I think that this study will give us an opportunity to do that.
And I, I don't want anyone to misconstrue what I'm saying here, that I'm not for public art. It's just that I think that in tough times, we have to make tough decisions and sometimes some things probably ought to be, you know, put on hiatus for a period of time if the funding is not there for more vital city services.
And the, the philosophy when the public arts program was started was it was an economic development program primarily, that it would show the activity and that's why it's funded from that source?
No, I, I, I don't disagree. The aesthetic is, is part of economic development, there's no doubt. But like I, like I said, in hard times, do you, do you continue to lease sculptures or do you do something maybe a little bit more meat and potatoes with that money? In terms of the Urbana Business Association, I am a member. I'm a dues-paying member and am supportive, but I'm curious, how do we measure the effectiveness of the UBA in any kind of terms that the city can, can justify its continued subsidy?
I think that they'll be coming to the council in the next committee or two and I think that they're, they'll be presenting some ideas on that and presenting a new form of contract that is more measurement-based, performance-based, and I think they do have some new board leadership there as well and that, that would be a great conversation to have with them.
Well, I look forward to that. While it's not in my ward, I have a specific interest. Cunningham Avenue. Specifically, what's on the horizon for the beautification, quote unquote, of Cunningham Avenue?
You know, we've looked at a lot of different ideas along Cunningham Avenue and because of the constraints of the right-of-way, we have very limited options. So some of the things that we've done is concentrate on closing unused curb cuts. That's a program we've had for a few years. We also have an incentive program to remove unused and non-conforming signs. So this reduces, improves the safety and reduces the clutter. We're interested in some landscape improvements, partnering in particular with the credit union at the northwest corner of Cunningham and University to have some impressive plantings there and some other ideas we might have, are there other landscape improvements, you know, that would not be very costly from a maintenance standpoint that could be continued along Cunningham Avenue? So it's such a built-out corridor, it is very hard to beautify, but these are the types of things that we've, we've worked on and I think it's making a slow difference. I think the sidewalk improvement will also help the safety and the appearance of Cunningham. So those are the ideas. We've even looked at banners, but the light poles aren't really conducive to banner placement. So we'll continue to, to study that and do what we can to improve the functionality and the appearance.
Okay, one of those, question I had about that was, is there any thought given to helping with, and I think, I don't know if Blossom Basket participated in TIF funding on their exterior rehab, but there are numerous businesses up and down the street. It's, it's one of those streets that had a lot of houses up and down it and still does have a few that have been converted to businesses, so facades are an issue. Man, I, I'm almost talking against myself here as a business owner and wanting to be free to do what I want to do, but I think there is a legitimate public interest in improving the, the appearance of the, the businesses along that corridor. Is there, is there TIF funding for that? Are we pushing businesses to participate in that?
Yeah, there, there is TIF funding. We've had a lot of participants. We don't really have like design controls along that corridor like, like we do in some other areas and that's a, it's not a big part of the eligibility. It's a, we have different points that you get and some, some aesthetics will count towards that, but that wouldn't disqualify. So I think, you know, we did a, a nice beautification plan for Cunningham that had some ideas, but I think different, different business improvements along the corridor would, would make a nice difference.
Okay. And finally, just a comment, not a question. The photo that you showed of downtown with the sun setting, sure would be nice to have one from the other end with the sun rising.
Yeah.
I think that'd be a little bit better statement than the sun setting.
We'll get, we'll get out early and do that, but I appreciate it's a good comment.
I'd be willing to budget overtime for that.
Okay, I think Carol was next and then Eric.
I just had a very quick, because I don't want to hold up anybody else's presentations, but we, there was a conversation on, about Cunningham Avenue and having a sign coming off of seventy-four, welcome to Urbana kind of sign that was supposed to be developed in this process. You don't have to answer it at this point, but at some point, if we could figure out where we are with that part of it too.
I know we were working on that. I'll have to get an update. There's only some things you can do with iDOT, but I think that would be great if we could do that.
Okay, Eric Jacobson?
I, I am moved by Mr. Madigan's comments to say that it looks as though we, at least through this cycle, we've come through the worst times and things are probably looking up. And, you know, the facts are the facts and we may really differ in our interpretation and I expect we do, but I believe that one of the reasons we have weathered that so well is we have continued to make smart public investments even when times were hard.
Diane?
Just one last question. I know the long-term goal is to equalize our tax, property tax rates, but the short-term, we're facing a real disparity in property tax rates between Champaign and Urbana and I think it's especially hard on sale of residential homes. So are we going to be focusing this year on ways to soften that difference, maybe looking at tax, property tax abatement programs like we had in the past with Build Urbana, creating some sort of program in the short-term to encourage investment in even new home, new homes in Urbana?
Yes, we are looking at that. We had a, a meeting with a group of developers who are interested in working with, with us on that and it would involve incentives if we can identify those as well as marketing to our community. And the result was the Realtors Bus Tour was one result, but we have additional conversations that we need to have with our district partners as well as with subdividers and we would love to see more housing starts and more subdivisions. Now, the numbers are, as I mentioned, they're better in 2014 and so I think they've moved up since the weather's improved, but I think that we'll need to do a lot more than that.
That was before the tax bills hit the mailboxes, so. Well, I'm looking forward to that.
Anyone else? Thank you very much, Libby. Okay, next we have the fire department.
Okay, this is my first budget presentation as fire chief, so bear with me. I brought my partner here. If you guys don't know Philip Edwards, he's our fire marshal and he'll be here to talk about a program that we're pretty excited about in the fire department that we're going to be kicking off this fall, so I'll let him do that here in a second. I think I'm going to start out by talking a little bit about the fire department and how we're organized and all the things that the fire department does that I don't think are generally evident to the general public. We're kind of broken down into, I guess you could say, three divisions if you include administration, but two major divisions. We have prevention and education and the fire marshal is in charge of that division and then we have operations. And that's ran by three division chiefs and we work twenty-four hour shifts and each division chief is responsible for operations for their twenty-four hour period of time. So that's, that's the breakdown in that. And our budget presentation, or in the book, starts on page sixty-seven and we kind of rewrote the description of the fire department this year. It hadn't been changed for a long time and I, I wanted to really concentrate on some of the things that the fire department does that we do without full-time administrators. The administration in the fire department is composed of two people, the fire chief and the administrative assistant. And in that area, you know, we, we do all the budget organizing, planning, staffing, that's all in administration. The prevention and education division is also two people. It's the fire marshal and the fire prevention officer on campus and that's the two full-time people. But in, in addition to that, we do a lot of inspections in the fire department, both commercial and multifamily. And our inspections are done by, or division inspections are done by some firefighters on overtime and the fire marshal and the campus prevention officer, along with all the engine companies. Our fifteen engine companies are each assigned a number of commercial inspection of the smaller businesses and we do the commons area of the multifamily. And in two thousand and thirteen, the prevention division did twelve-hundred-and-sixty-four inspections. And that's in addition to running five thousand emergency calls and we do an average of about probably thirty hours a month per firefighter and that's, that's really quite a bit of training in addition to running the calls and doing the inspections. So I think, you know, with our operations division, you could almost say that, that every fire company is an employee of the prevention division, wouldn't you agree? Our three-shift commanders, our operations division is by far the biggest division. It's got fifty-five people in that division. We have five company officers on each shift. We have a company officer that, that runs each fire apparatus you see and our city's got four fire stations, so we've got a fire engine in each fire station. We've got a ladder truck in the downtown station, so that's our five supervisors that run these companies. And I guess that in addition to providing the fire prevention service, we also have a captain that runs our EMS division and so he kind of pulls double duty on not only managing his company, but he runs the EMS division for the whole department. but he runs the EMS division for the whole department. We have a captain that runs our hazmat division and also a captain that runs technical rescue. And our technical rescue division, we're a state response team, which means we've been funded through federal monies to have training for our technical rescue team and all the equipment on that team. So that kind of breaks down our operations. When, when you get to page 68, I've kind of included each division chief in the operations division and the things that they do in addition to running their shifts. So that allows us to operate a fire department with a very small administrative staff when we use our 24-hour division chiefs to administer programs. Okay? The highlight of the budget changes for this year in the fire department, we went through our budget line item by line item with a goal of reducing the number of line items. And we had several areas in our budget that had been present for years that hadn't really changed with the fire department. And as you know, the budget has remained flat for several years, so we really evaluated each line item. We eliminated some line items, so when you look at our budget and you see some minuses and pluses in different areas, that would be the minuses are line items that we either reduced or eliminated. And then we took that money and we moved it into other line items that, that needed money. So instead of increasing the amount of money we need, we just kind of rebalanced our budget. Some of our big-ticket items this year in our vehicle and equipment replacement areas were due to purchase a rescue pumper this year. We've got $530,000 budgeted for that. This is replacing a vehicle that was purchased in 1999. It runs every call in the city. It runs all the fire calls, it runs all the rescue calls. So it's, it's a high-use vehicle. That vehicle right now has in excess of 14,000 hours on it. And if you put that in terms of a highway over-the-road truck, you're talking 600,000 miles. Obviously, these trucks do a lot of around-town driving. They have a lot of pumping time, idling time. And, you know, the around-town driving, I was talking to the fleet manager just last week, talking to him about our fleet. And he said it's really harder on the trucks, the starting and the stopping and the hitting the potholes and everything we expect our apparatus to do. And so when you put 14,000 hours on a truck like that, I mean, you know, we get a lot of use out of our vehicles. And, and I want to thank our fleet services out of Public Works because we have an excellent group of mechanics, you know, that maintains our fleet. I mean, these guys do a great job. I mean, we're, we're really spoiled here in the city of Urbana on what type of fleet services that we have. And so anyway, in, in our long-term VERF, we're actually due to replace two engines this year. The one that we replaced and we bought in 1999 and it was on a 15-year replacement schedule. And we bought a new ladder truck in 1999. It was on a, originally a 25-year replacement schedule and we've brought it back to 20 years. The next engine we bought was in 1992. It was on a 12-year replacement schedule. And so it should be replaced this year, but we've chosen to move it off to next year to kind of try to balance the budget out a little more. So we'll be asking to replace that other engine and it's the campus engine in, in the next budget year. Some other big-ticket items in our VERF purchases was hydraulic tools and rescue airbags. And I reported a few weeks ago that we've received a federal grant to replace every tool that we've got as far as rescue tools for auto extrication on all of our apparatus. So we'll actually be stretching those dollars through a federal grant. Okay, I think at this time, I have one more thing to cover. I mean, I was talking about our technical rescue team. And we're making plans this year to roll out a program. And I'd like to, to bring an ordinance to the council in a few months on utilizing our technical rescue team in confined space rescue for industry in our city. It's an OSHA requirement that all of our industries, when they have confined spaces, when they make entries, that a confined space rescue team gets put on, on the permit. It's a OSHA requirement. Currently, I'm not aware of any other confined space rescue teams in our, in the area. And to comply with the law, industry must contact the rescue team, allow the rescue team to train in their spaces and allow the rescue team to pre-plan the spaces. And currently, none of that is happening. And so the program, I've had Captain Wisher, who runs our technical rescue team, design a program to bring this service to industry and help our industry get in compliance with the technical rescue aspect of the OSHA law. There's a couple of goals in that. Number one is compliance. Number two is, is we know these areas exist in the city and there are areas that we have potential rescues and that we'll be putting our employees in positions to do rescues in these areas. And it, and it benefits us to be able to pre-plan these areas, to know these areas exist and to generate some funding also to keep this technical rescue team equipped and trained and ready to respond. So that's, that's another program that you'll be seeing here this year. And we kind of put that down as some of our, one of our highlights for this year. And I'll go ahead and give Phillip the microphone and let him talk about the new program that we're going to be partnering with the county fire chief on.
You did say we're supposed to be up here 10 minutes, right?
That's it. All right, take my turn.
Actually, I'm really excited about this new opportunity that we have. It's going to be an explorer post. We're actually a part of the Champaign County Fire Chiefs Association. It'll be explorer post number 31. In fact, I can hand these out. Do I give these to you or do?
I can do that while you talk.
Okay, you hand it out. There you go. And basically, what, what this is, is this is an opportunity for children that are interested in the fire service to have something more to look forward to other than just, because right now, if they want to be in the fire service, if they want to know more about it, we have a program where they could come and ride along for a day with the firefighters, which is a great opportunity. However, after that, there's not a whole lot to offer besides that. So what this is going to do is going to give us an opportunity for these children, for these young people, young adults, to do more in the fire service, sort of like, for lack of a better term, sort of like the Boy Scouts of the fire service. You have an opportunity to go out and actually experience the things that we do on a daily basis, trained as firefighters within reason. We're not putting them in hazardous conditions, but we do train them on what to do in hazardous conditions so that if they're interested in pursuing a career in the fire service when they get older, they have a bit of a foundation. Some of the opportunities that will be extended, they'll learn something about firefighting, technical rescues, high-angle rescues, all of the disciplines that we learn in the fire service. They have an opportunity to experience that a little bit in their capacity. We're only offering this to people 14 to 21 years old. They have to have completed eighth grade. So if it's your third time in the eighth grade, you probably have to wait till you finish your eighth grade before you can actually be a part of this. But what we're excited about is it also gives us an opportunity to work with other chiefs in the county. So it's not just relegated to, to Urbana. We get to work in conjunction with others, but it's, we're really excited about Urbana's role in it. We're going to have different firefighters that are offering to come, come in and help train the children. I keep saying children. It's supposed to be young adults. The young adults that are taking a part in this. And basically, what it's going to do is give them an opportunity to learn more about the fire service, so.
Okay, I think Carol has a question.
I just wanted to ask the chief. I really appreciate that the program is great soon as my son finishes the eighth grade. And he's only in sixth, so it's not two or three times, but I'm gonna sign him up. But I did wanted to just ask you quickly, can you, I, I was wondering what the technical rescue, small area industrial, what that is or some example of what that would be?
I just happen to have a brochure.
Yeah, I'll hand it out while you talk.
Okay. Okay, like I said, Captain Wisher's done a lot of work on this, on this program. When you have an area that's defined as, as a confined space, whether it would be a tank, whether it would be an elevator pit, any, a confined space is designed as something that's not made for regular inhabitation by, by a person. It can have an atmosphere that's, that's not conducive to life. It can have illimitative means of egress. I mean, there's an OSHA definition of what a confined space is. And confined space utilizes the skills of rope rescue. It utilizes the skill of hazmat. It utilizes the skill that the guys learn with their air packs. So these are, these are all skills that we use in firefighting and, and skills that we use in rescue. And we have 30 people that are fully certified as technical rescue technicians, which is a combination of, of eight classes. Seven of them are a week long, the eighth one is a two-week class. And they all carry a certification as a technical rescue technician. And, you know, we're, we're fortunate since 2002 to have worked towards, you know, being a state-level rescue response team. Means all the equipment that we have, we, we have two trailers that we maintain. One we call our dirty trailer and it's got construction tools in it, trench rescue tools in it. The second trailer is a clean trailer. It's got rope, it's got air supply, it's got things that you really want to keep clean. And we've got all this, these assets and we've got all this training that's, you know, that's been purchased through Homeland Security money that's, that's come from the federal government, through the Illinois Terrorism Task Force, and then through MABUS, which is our mutual aid box alarm system for the state of Illinois. And we were one of the original teams in the state to become a, become a fully certified functional team. And, and we're on state call-out. And it's nice to have all these resources sitting here, but at the same time, it's expensive to maintain. I mean, you've got to keep these guys trained. And we train them on their rescue skills individually, you know, on shift with our normal training schedule. The things that we lack in our training for the technical rescue team, our team trainings, when we get the team out together, because these guys are all on 24-hour shifts, so it's hard to pull them all together unless you do that on overtime. And so that's kind of where we're lacking. We, we need to train on deployment exercises. When we deploy the team, they have to be self-sufficient for 72 hours. So if there's a tornado in another part of the state and we hook up to our trailers and we send them out on the road, we've got tents, we've got sleeping bags, we carry water and we grab food on the way out of town. And these guys have to be self-sufficient because, you know, in the beginning stages of a disaster, you know, you really don't have the Red Cross set up yet or you don't have things set up. And these guys have to go to work right away. And while they're working and performing rescues and trying to locate people, then the infrastructure gets set up around them. But while that infrastructure gets set up, I mean, this team has to operate. So, so I think we're fortunate to have that team. And this is just one of the four major areas that our team's trained in is confined space. So I hope that answered your question, maybe a little more than you wanted. I've got a passion for it. I've, I've been involved with the team since its inception.
Eric Jacobson.
This may come in the category of maybe it's not broke enough to try to fix, but it does occur to me that your equipment replacement needs form, you know, spikes in the budget. And, 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 you know, we can generally manage that, but, but I wonder if, if you've considered the possibility of, of transitioning to an equipment fund that would be sort of levelly funded each year and which you would draw on at the time that the equipment reaches the, the, you know, the end of its appropriate life cycle.
You know, that's basically what we've got in, in our VERF fund. And, you know, we've laid out our, our vehicle and equipment replacement fund citywide over a 10-year period of time. And we try to spread the purchases of the fire trucks out. And the thing about fire trucks are, I mean, you know, when you're looking at a half a million dollars for a fire engine and a million dollars for a ladder truck, you know, it's not like buying a pickup truck or a police car. I mean, we have very expensive vehicles that we try to get a lot of life out of. You know, you're talking 12 years and with, you know, a department that runs 5,000 calls a year. So, I mean, like I said, we, we were really lucky to have a good fleet services department at Public Works, you know, that, that maintains our vehicles as well as, I would put them up against any fleet services in the state. And so I think the reason we ended up with two engines in the same year, we, back in 99 and 2002, we analyzed our fleet. And when we took over the UFI Fire Protection in 1998, we significantly increased the calls that we were doing. Just before that, we used to staff the prevention division with two full-time people. Well, in 1996, we went down to one person in the division and we started doing company inspections. So we used to have a fire department that the trucks were parked a lot and the guys were in the stations and they trained, but we fully didn't utilize the potential we had with, with the, with the people we had. And so the department was kind of reorganized back then and we put all of our vehicles out on the road. And we had these guys do inspections, you know, that's why we did 1,200-plus inspections last year with, with engine companies. You know, guys that, and, and we give them smaller places to inspect because when they're in inspecting a, a business, at the same time they're doing that, they have to have the ability to respond to anybody's emergency in the city within four and a half minutes. So, so we gauge that. And we give them the small inspections and then the bigger inspections where, that are quite a bit more involved, go to Phil's division and we use people that are on, either on 40 hours or we'll bring people back on overtime because, you know, you can't get deep into an inspection at Guardian West and be able to get out of the building and on your truck and respond, you know, in, in four and a half minutes. So that's kind of how we do that. But, but because of the way we changed the way we do business, we realized back then that we were going to put a lot more miles on these engines. We're putting a lot more hours on them because they're out on the street all the time and these guys are working. And they have to take the trucks with them to be able to respond. So it, it created a situation where we were putting a lot more miles and a lot more hours on our vehicles. We have a 1987 fire truck, it's our second reserve. And it has 115,000 miles on it, okay? Our 1999 that we're due to replace has 144,000 miles on it. So you can see, you know, what's happened with the use of our, our fire vehicles. And we just use them more and more, so.
I, I would like to say that Illinois gets criticized a lot, but Illinois is one of the top two states in the country when it comes to emergency services. And the other one is New York. And when there was the hurricane in New Orleans, it was Illinois and New York that were called down there to help out. So we really do have excellent services here. Charlie?
I don't know if I was next, but let's talk some, let's talk some of the numbers on, on page 72.
Okay.
Well, starting at the bottom, the 2% fire insurance payment, it's no longer being done. It wasn't done last year. What's up with that?
That's kind of an accounting change.
Okay.
That's, that's a check, you know, it's, it's got to do with the insurance coverage when people buy out-of-state insurance. It's the foreign fire insurance fund. And in the past, that check would come to the city, it would get deposited and the city would, would write a check. Well, here lately, the check now comes written to the foreign fire insurance fund. And we have a group of trustees that manages that fund. So there's really no need to run it through the budget process when it gets deposited directly in that fund. So that money still comes and it's still there and a group of trustees manages that money. And they, they purchase items for the fire department.
Okay.
So that's just an accounting change.
Okay. One that is really perplexing, the fire pension fund is, the transfer there is less than last year. It's a little bit of savings, if I'm understanding it. But the, and that's almost a third of the way down. But the police pension transfer is. But the police pension transfer is a real pain in the you-know-what at three hundred and eighty-some thousand dollars more than, you know, expected. So, why is one going down and the other going way up?
I think this guy here can answer that. I'm not really sure, to be honest with you.
Rich Henshaw, the comptroller, will answer that one.
The amount budgeted for both the pension plans is based upon the annual actuarial study, and the actual study is done independently for the fire department and for the police pension funds. So, they're not related.
So, they can go all over the place.
Right. It's based upon life expectancies, number of people retiring, investment returns in both the funds, and so on.
Do we know if one does a better job investing than the other?
I don't.
Okay. Okay, well, maybe while you're still sitting here, my last question is related to overtime. There was a big jump from fiscal year twelve to fiscal year thirteen. The, this is halfway down the first section, overtime. And then we've got another increase of twenty-six thousand five hundred this year over last year, and we don't have the actual final number. Where are we on the final number for overtime this year? And is this, you know, this isn't a very large amount, given the sum here and expected, you know, fluctuations in overtime and so on, but there was the big jump in the past years.
The additional twenty-six thousand five hundred you're seeing is sixty-five hundred of that is money that we're awarded for our federal grant with our hydraulic tools. We're awarded some money for overtime to train nine of our employees to be trained, the trainers, and it's a nationally-recognized program extrication for the newer vehicles. So, that money's coming directly from a grant of sixty-five hundred. The twenty thousand is reimbursements that we receive every year for our MABUS training, the rescue training for our technical rescue team. And that's basically an accounting change. I mean, you know, we've, we used to post the revenue to an expense account, and we don't do that anymore. And so, we've added the twenty thousand dollars that we always get, you know, for reimbursement from MABUS, and we've actually put it on the revenue side upfront, because we're expecting to receive that much reimbursement every year. That's historically what we've received. As far as our overtime budget, our overtime budget got hit really hard this year, because from the time that the fire chief and a captain retired in July, you know, we didn't make a fire chief appointment till December. So, we were upgrading to division chief. We were upgrading captains. We were upgrading in several areas in the fire department. And at the same time, we were going through a new testing process to hire firefighters. So, we didn't replace two firefighter jobs that opened up in July until January first. And then we had another retirement in December that we replaced in January. So, we finally hired three new firefighters in January. So, in our total budget and personnel, we show excess money in the firefighter line that was spent out of the overtime budget in overtime to cover those positions. Also, we spent the extra money in upgrades through positions with overtime that, you know, I guess it leaves excess money in each position, and it's made up for in the overtime budget. So, we'll show one line over in overtime and some other lines that still have money left in them, but it balances out overall in our personnel budget.
Okay. And to your credit, the grand total at the very end is only sixteen thousand more this year than last year, so...
Yeah, and that's why you see all the pluses and minuses. That was just realigning and reducing our number of line items.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I think Bill Brown is next, and then Eric Jacobson. Bill?
While Rich is here, I just wanted to follow up on the pension question a little bit. So, once we determine the actuarial expense, and I guess that would be like a percentage, figure out what percent funded it is, and then come up, do we use the statutory formula after that to determine what our contribution would be? Isn't there like something in state statute that you use?
The actuary actually provides the recommended tax levy funding based upon the study. And we fund and levy that amount and budget for that amount equally, the same amount.
Okay. So, we don't use the formula where it's like eighty percent funded by twenty, forty, or something like that? I don't remember if it was twenty, forty, or twenty, thirty, or...
I honestly don't remember the exact details of the study, which approach the actuary uses, but whatever he comes up with is the recommended funding level for the levy and for the pension fund is what the city uses.
Okay. Okay, thanks. And then I still have a question for the chief. On the vehicle equipment replacement, when you budget for the new equipment, is that with the trade-in? Do we get, we must get something for the old equipment, right?
Yeah, we're not sure what we would get for an old fire truck, but that would go back into general fund to help offset what we spend. We generally keep two pieces of apparatus for reserve. So, right now, we have a nineteen eighty-seven, I believe, and nineteen ninety in reserve. We have a reserve in service most of the time, because we're always sending an engine out to the garage to get maintained, whether it's brakes put on, or oil changes, or repairs. So, we always have at least one reserve in service. Where the second reserve comes into play, if something happens where we get two trucks down, or if we have a fire, we do callbacks of personnel. When we call, it takes every piece of apparatus we got to do a working fire, because we're a fairly small fire department. And we'll call firefighters back. We'll put them on reserve pieces of apparatus, and they'll cover the city. Because, you know, although we're fighting a fire in one place, we still have medical calls and accidents and alarms going on in other parts of the city that we have to cover while we're fighting a fire.
So, we might rotate these into the as-reserve vehicles?
We do. We'll get rid of the oldest of the reserves and then bring the ones coming offline and put them in reserve.
And then, so I noticed the proposed budget for the vehicle, the capital replacement went up by about a hundred thousand, low over a hundred thousand to three twenty-eight. Is that right? Is that the one I'm looking at, maybe?
Yeah, I'm not sure. We've...
Yeah, it went from one ninety-six to three twenty-eight. So, that, I think, by the ten-year plan that we saw last week, that would be about three million. That's about what's planned, I think. So, it seems like it's at the right level now. It might have been a little low before. So, kind of related to that, I noticed that the expense that we're charging, the UFI, didn't really go up much. It went from one point eight million to one point eight seven five, basically, a little less than three percent. Even though they've, we do all the research park, and they've built new buildings and everything like that, I wondered, are there just not many more calls? That's based on cost?
Yeah, basically, that follows our labor contract, and we haven't completed our labor contract yet. Whatever expenses that we experience in negotiating the labor contract, the raises, our UFI contract funds those expenses. So, that figure is, you know, at the point in time when we get a labor contract completed, that figure could change on the reimbursement for the UFI, for the contract for services.
So, does it take into consideration like the vehicle replacement costs and capital costs we have?
Yeah, we have some set capital costs, and those have accelerated about three percent per year since the life of the contract for our capital funds. We've got the replacement of the fire truck. We factor in the personal protective equipment. It costs us in excess of twenty-five hundred dollars per employee to put their fire gear on them, and their helmets and gloves. And then the air packs are about an additional five thousand dollars apiece that are on their backs. So, all of that stuff is factored in for, the contract covers fifteen operational employees and then one inspector. It covers sixteen employees.
Do you know about what percentage of calls would be campus calls of those five thousand?
Wow, I don't.
Maybe I can find out when you have time.
Yeah, if you can send me an email on that. D.C. Chisholm tracks all the firehouse data, and I can get that to you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Eric, and then Carol.
Yeah, no, so, this was, just to follow up for just a moment on Bill, you said, it does seem to me, though, that we're probably doing okay with what we're billing the university, because what we're billing the university is going up faster than our overall budget. So, in other words, that's going up three percent, but the overall budget is going up a much smaller amount than that. So, they're probably paying their fair share. But that wasn't the real question. But that wasn't the real question I had. Do I remember the real question I had? Oh, yeah. The, you know, up to a certain point, it's clear that overtime is a good deal for the city, because, yes, you're paying more hourly, but on the other hand, for that person, the fringe benefits are flat. So, more than compensates. But the question I have is, it looks as though the overtime is something like six percent or five and a half percent of the total personnel cost. And is that, if you compare notes with other cities, is that a pretty typical fraction of personnel cost to be going to overtime?
Yeah, I would think so. I know a lot of cities, just not too much bigger than we are, that have overtime budgets in excess of a million dollars. And we have a minimum staffing of three people per apparatus. And on two of our shifts, we carry four people on two apparatus. On the other shift, we carry four people on three apparatus. And so, these people that we carry above minimum staffing, we use those for vacation relief and sick leave relief, and that helps control some of our overtime costs. Years ago, we added that third person on the shift, because we had a person that was in the National Guard that took a lot of military leave, and we kind of analyzed how much money we were spending on overtime to cover that position. And it was cheaper to hire a full-time person than the amount of overtime we were spending. So, that's where that third position came on one shift. And there's a lot of times we'll take that person. It's usually, you know, we'll say that's the youngest person on the fire department. And last year, we had an individual that injured his shoulder, and he was on duty injury for a year. And so, I moved that third person to that shift to keep the overtime down on that shift. So, you know, we can take that person, and you never know when somebody's going to have a sickness or an injury, and then you've got somebody out for six months, or, you know, like this last person for a year. He just came back to work about three weeks ago, and he was injured last April. So, we were able to take that person and put him on the shift where this guy worked. And it really helped our overtime situation, keep our costs down.
Okay. Carol?
I just wanted to ask a hypothetical question.
Okay.
The city has obviously lost revenue, tax-based revenue, that has affected the entire city. But we haven't exactly required any cuts in any departments. If that was the case, where would you see cutting six percent from?
Wow, that's a tough question. I mean, I guess we look at a little bit of everything. I mean, in the fire department, we provide a lot of services. And I think that we've went so long on a nearly flat budget that we would have to look at cutting services. Part of what's wrapped up into our overtime cost is we bring firefighters back on overtime to do inspections right now. I think a long-range goal of our department would be to add another person in the prevention division, you know, as the money comes in. But, you know, if we had to make cuts, we may have to stretch out the amount of time between inspections. And it's things that we don't want to do. A lot of our inspection division, the activities in that division are tied to our ISO rating. And for a department our size, we have an excellent ISO rating. We're Class Two.
To your...
ISO rating.
ISO rating. We don't know what that is.
That's an insurance rating.
It is. It determines what our residents pay for their business insurance and their homeowner's insurance.
I see.
And so, and we have an exceptional rating there. So, you know, as you cut money, you have to decide what programs to cut. And if you cut programs, or if you would happen to, you know, cut the amount of firefighters you had, which in our case, we'd have to close a station or brown out a station, I mean, that affects our ability to maintain that ISO rating. And in the long run, it ends up costing our citizens more money, because they'll either pay it to support the fire department, or they'll pay additional money for their homeowners or business insurance if that ISO rating creeps up.
I see.
That's kind of a, that's one thing that the fire department has that gives us the ability to help our taxpayers by keeping that ISO rating low and keeping their insurance rates low.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Knightlinger? Diane?
Just going to stay with overtime.
Okay.
What percentage of that overtime goes for paying for building inspections? Do you know? I mean, it's over, we're at over, we're right around four hundred nine thousand dollars for this budget. So, how much are we spending on inspections of that amount?
I think this year, we've spent, we're under thirty thousand dollars on the inspections.
In overtime?
In overtime. But one thing that's helped us this year, the guy that I was just talking about that's been on duty injury, as soon as he had his surgery and he was rehabilitated enough, we brought him back on light duty. And we've been using him in the inspections division to do inspections. So, even though we've got a guy that's on duty injury that we can't use for firefighting, you know, we utilize him in other areas. And we've probably got, what would you say, eight or nine months of inspections out of him, which has really helped the amount that we've spent on inspections.
And how about training? Is there, what's your estimate on overtime for training?
You know, I would say, just off the top of my head, for training, it's probably under twenty thousand dollars on the training part of it. A lot of the training that we do that would cost us overtime, we get reimbursed for through MABUS. And the other thing we do, we have a fund where we'll pay tuition for guys to do training, but we'll have them get a stand-in, or they'll use vacation time when they're on duty to get the training. Because the training that they're doing is basically preparing them for promotion, and we'll pay the tuition, but then they have an investment of their time in the training classes. So, you know, we kind of are both investing in their ability to be promoted on the fire department.
So, is it accurate to say, then, pretty much the remainder is of the overtime pay is going to pay for either vacancies or bringing people in to cover a shift if everyone else is out on a call? Or is there another big category of spending?
Well, it keeps us up to minimum staffing. And the way we track that, we track how much overtime is attributed to people taking vacations, how much overtime's attributed to sick leave. You know, there's a lot of different areas that we can attribute overtime to, because even though we have two people on shift to cover vacations and sick leaves and duty injuries, sometimes we have in excess of that of the people that are off for various, you know, for those reasons. I mean, basically, that overtime fund is there to keep us at a minimum of three people on an apparatus.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Oh, did you have a question, Mike? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I didn't see Mike had a question. Go ahead.
Yeah, him, yeah. You're all good. You're taking care of the young adults. You're all good.
Chief, just real quickly, with regard to the, and maybe you've answered this, and I'm just not understanding it, with regard to the facility inspections, what is the frequency now?
Okay, we have two categories. We have the fire prevention permits that we issue, and those are done every year. The other inspections, we divide it up to every two years. Okay, so if your business doesn't require a fire prevention permit, our crew will be there once every two years. We used to do those every year, and they're just, there were just too many for us to get them all done. So, we've really concentrated on the fire prevention permit occupancies, because they're a little higher hazard. And some of those have the hazardous materials involved. And then we consistently do the multi-families every other year. And where we do those, we do the common areas, and then we'll walk around the buildings and... And, and where we do those, we do the common areas and then we'll walk around the buildings and pick up things that are obvious.
Right.
And then, when building safety does them, they can actually get into every occupancy.
So, with regards to the annual fire prevention permit inspections, what would the cost savings be to pushing that to a two-year cycle?
On the fire prevention permits?
Yes.
I think the cost savings would basically be the amount of time the crews were out on the road. I mean, and, and we're paying these guys anyway. We're paying them twenty-four hours a day, so you may have-
But, some of that is overtime.
Yeah, and the overtime are the bigger inspections. So, it, you know, it could save a lot of, well, not, probably half of that overtime, would you say?
Oh, sorry. See, I lied.
The fire prevention permits, they actually are, there's a fee involved with that, that, that businesses pay every year.
Yeah.
So, if we went back to just inspecting every other year, then we're missing that year in between as far as getting that, generating that.
Yeah, see, I'm one of those businesses that pays that fee. But, as the city is wont to do, I would think that if the choice would be to push it to a two-year cycle and double the fee, there would be no loss of revenue. You see what I'm saying?
Okay, I, I understand.
So, yeah, I, I, I'm just wondering, I'm, I'm not asking for anybody to consider reducing a fee or cutting, you know, cutting a fee in half. I'm just wondering what the savings would be to the department to push that cycle to two years. Because I will tell you, for my small business, nothing changes. You know, in the fire department, they're great. They come in, they point out this or that, that we could do better. And we take that very seriously. But, I, I would think for the lion's share of small businesses that a bi- a biennial inspection would be effective. And I'm just wondering what the savings to the city would be. So, quantifying that, I think, would be a, a good exercise just to-
And, and for your business, that would be good. But, there are also businesses that change hands. And, by us getting out there every year, it gives us an opportunity to stay on, on top of that, not just from a money standpoint, but from a sa- from a safety standpoint.
So, for those businesses that change hands, we could require the inspection to start all over again when it changes hands, you know, and just reset that cycle for that business. I, I just think it'd be a good exercise to go through and I'd like to see, you know, if you could quantify the savings for a, a biennial inspection. You know, just as a cost-saving measure. I mean, I, you, you've done a great job, in my opinion, of holding down the overall bottom line. And, maybe it's just another way to, you know, to look at, hey, where can we save some money? And not necessarily, so answer me this, would the, my, my second part of that question is, a biennial inspection, would that, would that change an ISO rating?
You'd have to evaluate, evaluate the, the money we saved. We'd, we'd lose some points, but, but we're a really strong two. It's not like we barely made a two. We're, we're a very strong two. In fact, we're closer to a one than we are a three.
So, arguably, a business, you could maybe go to that biennial cycle and not jeopardize an ISO rating in terms of insurance.
It would be possible. I mean, it's, it's just a matter of looking at all the points we have available to us to maintain that two. And, and obviously, there, there are ways to achieve a one. But, you know, it would cost the city a substantial amount of money to staff our engines up to achieve a one. So, you know, there are some things that you accept that, you know, the insurance saving between a one and two is not a lot. So, so, we don't, you know, by plan, we don't spend the money to staff up to do a one because of that. And, and I saw, you know, it's just a matter of looking at all the points. And, I know we always get maximum points on our water supply, our dispatch system. We get maximum points in our training. We have a lot of things that are in our control that we always get maximum points for.
Right.
And so, that, that's an area, you know, it, it may not cost us that too.
Okay, on a, on a, on a separate subject, EMS. I have, I have residents in my ward ask me on a somewhat regular basis, why is the fire truck and the ambulance both coming to a call? And I'm wondering, how does that figure in in terms of staff hours and the cost to the city? Mileage on the vehicles for responding to a call that an ambulance is responding to at the same time? Say there's one, I'm talking about like a residential, a nine-one-one call, where there's probably one person in distress. But, there are multiple vehicles from, from, you know, private ambulance service to city vehicles responding to that request.
That's based on the type of call. We do a priority emergency medical dispatch system. And so, when calls come into our dispatch system, our dispatchers are, are trained to ask certain questions. And when they ask the questions, they rate the calls. The call could be an A-level call, which gets an ambulance only. And that would be a broken limb or, you know, something that's not a life-threatening injury. When you raise up to a B or a C level call, that requires an engine and an ambulance. And, historically, in a lot of parts of the city, and probably not in your neighborhood, the engine's gonna get to your neighborhood about the same time as the ambulance. But, if you're in the south neighborhoods, if you're at Myer Ridge, you're gonna get a fire engine probably two or three minutes, if not four minutes, before you get an ambulance. And so, all of our engines are, provide a level of care, an advanced level of care where they can, they start IVs, they administer drugs, they intubate patients. You know, we're, we're a higher level of care in our, in our fire engines than most fire departments are. So, we can start life-saving measures prior to an ambulance getting there. And it's not uncommon to go, especially down in the Stone Creek area, the Myer Ridge area, or the areas that are a little farther away from where the ambulances are housed, that our crews will have an IV started on a patient, they'll have fluids administered. You know, they'll, they'll take some real life-saving measures. When the ambulance gets there, they just load the patient up and go. So, by having the ability to, you know, to get an engine and an ambulance there based on the level of call. You know, when you get on up to a D-level call, that's an immediately life-threatening call. The dispatchers can identify that and they'll tell our folks right away. In a lot of cases, that will get two ambulances and an engine because they know there's gonna be a lot of work that's gonna have to be done. Most of those calls, the engine will go back to the hospital with just one person on it. You'll have the two people in the ambulance plus one of our folks driving the ambulance and then the third person in the back of the ambulance, that'll be one of our advanced care people. So, you know, that, that gets one of our citizens, three people, working on that patient to save a life. And then, we basically drive our engine to the emergency room. When they're done with the call, they pick up our two employees and I take them back to the station. So, you know, it, it gives, I guess, the hands needed when we need them there.
Is there any reimbursement to the city in any of these cases?
There's not. What we do, we do a trade-out on the materials we use. You know, the, the IV materials, the drugs, the oxygen masks. We do a trade-out with the ambulance, so, so we have no cost to the fire department for that stuff. Additionally, Carl provides all of our continuing education required by the Illinois Department of Public Health to keep all of our people certified. So, we have no cost for that training. Carl provides it as part of the service.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Eric.
So, as it happened in the, in the tragedy that I saw on Friday night, the, the truck got there as it happened before the ambulance.
Yes.
And unfortunately, you know, the person was beyond help. But, if it had been a case where, you know, just a very brief time improvement in response would have made the difference, that, that truck would have provided the, the most rapid response. So, I'm, I'm a believer.
Yeah, and then most of the time, especially in an auto accident, our guys can start doing the extrication and even get a person, what we call packaged for transport, while the ambulance is still en route. And I mean, as soon as the ambulance gets there, you can load them and go. And, and you know, it gives that, those precious seconds that you need to save a life.
And when you, any call like a heart attack call, for example, you have someone going to cardiac arrest, you're gonna be working. Everyone there will be working. And the more people you could throw at that, the better chance you have of saving a life. And, if you're that person in, in distress or if it's your loved one, just seeing that first responder getting there that much quicker helps to bring the level of anxiety down a little bit because you feel like, because you know that, okay, help is here. So, from that standpoint, that's why you see more than one vehicle. You see an ambulance and a fire engine going, even if it's just one patient. That one patient can require, you know, five or six, you know, people working on them.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm well aware of what you're saying here. But, I, the reason I ask the question is less for my benefit and more for the public's benefit because I think this is an oft-asked question. And, I think the city could probably do a bit better job not casting aspersions on anyone. I'm just saying it's a PR thing. If it's an important service to the folks of the city, we need to make sure that people understand why it's important. And, and just keep hammering away at that.
Yeah, we used to run a lot of calls on people with what I call the A-level calls at our priority dispatch to where engines would run, our engines would get there and really not be needed. And so, that's why we really took measures countywide to do this priority medical dispatch. And I think sometimes people get frustrated when they call nine-one-one because the nine-one-one operators are asking these questions. But, in the process of asking these questions, they're giving them the appropriate level of care. And, and that way, we're not running our engines out the door for extremely basic calls that an ambulance can handle.
Okay. Does anyone else have a question for Chief Nightlinger? Thank you very much. The Urbana Free Library.
Thank you very much.
Has a budget, I guess it's not free, huh?
Ooh. Actually, I was talking to a woman who is from India. And in India, where she is from, you have to pay to subscribe to a library. The public libraries there are not as robust as they are here. And so, she said that in order to, in addition to paying her taxes for the library, in order to get good library service, she had to pay at the door as well. So, that is a very good point, I'm glad you brought it up. So, thank you again for your time tonight, I appreciate it. The library's budget starts on page one fifty-five here. If you're interested, I have just six slides to show you tonight, some highlights. And of course, I'm happy to take any questions that you might have. I'm Celeste Chote, I'm the new executive director of the library, I started seven weeks ago. So, hopefully, any questions that you have, I'll be able to answer tonight. But, like a good librarian, if I don't have the answer, I will look it up and get back with you later. So, our overall budget this year is three point three million dollars, basically. This excludes the IMR, IMRF contribution that the city makes, as well as the social security payment towards the FICA. This is a little bit lower than the eleven-twelve fiscal year budget, given the Carl reduction in the, the general fund that came our way. So, eighty-eight percent of our budget is based on local property taxes. Overall, our non-staff costs are just under six hundred thousand dollars. Materials, which are the things that people check out, the books, DVDs, three hundred fourteen thousand dollars. And then, the wages and centralized staff costs insurance and things is the majority of the budget at almost two point four million dollars, which I've got in the handy pie chart. It's a service organization, so we expect that staff who provide excellent, amazing customer service are gonna have the majority of the funding. It is a goal to have the total materials budget raised a little bit, more towards twelve to fifteen percent of the overall budget. This is up from being closer to six to eight percent over the past few years. So, we are happy to see that the materials budget is going up so that we can provide the excellent materials that patrons wanna check out or use online. At this moment, as of this afternoon, I should say, given what is checked out, four hundred seventy-two thousand dollars, so almost a half a million dollars worth of materials are currently checked out to our library patrons. So, here's some return on your investment. And this is just one particular day. And any given day, it's gonna be up or down. But, I thought that that was a nice snapshot of use of the library by its community and the value the library provides back for people's tax dollars. In addition to having materials to check out, we provide a wonderful community space for people to come together. This is a picture of one of our fairy tale balls, which is actually not paid for by library funding. It's paid for by the former director who donates money every year. And we promote reading and fairy tales and fun and science and all kinds of coming-together activities. This year, we had almost sixteen hundred people in on a Friday night in April to celebrate fairy tales and learning and literacy. It was really a great first Friday night at the library for me. As we reach out to engage, part of our mission is to foster literacy in a strong sense of community. This is certainly one way to do it. This year's the hundred forty-year anniversary of the Urbana Free Library. And so, we're gonna be celebrating throughout the year. I encourage you to attend the number of events that we're gonna have. We have programs that are gonna highlight the library's rich history and the current services. And in, in doing this, we'll be reaching out to the community once again, as we do, in finding out what do they like about the library, what are suggestions they have for things we could do differently, what is working well and what are adjustments that we could make. So, what questions do you have for me tonight?
Yes, Diane.
Diane.
I'm sorry.
Well, I'm looking for a much, to a, forward to a much calmer summer at the library than, than last year. So, my questions are, last year's budget had a special section where the contributions from Friends of the Library and the Urbana Library Foundation, what they contributed. And, I know it's, it's significant and I didn't see it in the revenues in this year's budget. Is it somewhere else?
It is in the trial budget that's on our website. The Friends and the Foundation weren't sure what their contributions would be this year. The Friends, of course, is based strictly on book sale, not strictly, but it's based on book sale sales. And they weren't sure with how things were going. And the foundation has, has made some large contributions, given different capital programs that were happening. And they don't know that this year, there will be any of those. They've also cut back on their con- conference, sorry, concert contributions.
Right. Well, it'd just be nice to see even historical, so people have an idea that, that there's, in addition to the taxes everyone pays, there's actually a lot of community support. So, I just think it's nice to show, you've got fiscal year eleven-twelve. I mean, just historically, it'd be nice to show that.
We'd be happy to provide the historical data, as long as people don't mind there being zeros for the estimation for this year.
Right, yeah. Okay, that'd be fine. Then, my other question is, how did you, you appear to have the same FTEs from this year compared to last year, but you're budgeting significantly less for salaries. How did you, how does that work?
There are, given the quick turnaround between when the Carl cut was made clear what the dollar amount would be for the libraries a Thursday and the next board meeting a Tuesday, meeting with the mayor and Rich on Wednesday, we opted to create a budget that meets the requirements of what the city is providing this year, which is generous. And we're very happy for the funds. As you know, the library board quarterly readjusts its funding within the constraints put forward by the budget. So, we held open three current full-time positions, anticipating that within the year and within a little bit more of time under my belt, I can coordinate with staff and look for ways to fund some of the full-time positions within this budget. For example, the IT manager position, we funded at a halftime level, but pulled out halftime and then pulled out the benefits. We are actively looking to see what we else can cut and how we can streamline our finances and other ways to fund that position in a full-time manner. So, it is my hope to be able to fund at least a couple of these full-time positions with some cost savings within the budget, going through the board with their approval.
Okay. IMRF. In past budgets, we've seen what the city's contribution was within the library budget. And I don't, I'm not finding it. And I know it's somewhere between four hundred twelve to four hundred seventy-six thousand dollars a year, which I think it's important for the public to understand, you know, what the city contribution is. So, is, is it somewhere in your revenue? Or is it somewhere else?
I will defer to Rich.
Okay.
Yeah, the, even though the, the library uses our accounting system, their accounting structure is significantly different than ours. I believe it's, it's captured somewhere in these numbers in its entirety. It is shown in the general fund as a cost of the general fund to transfer to the library.
Right, right.
But, we will do, we can bring back next week a better portrayal of where all that is, including what you just asked for as far as the other funds.
Yeah, I think it's just good to give the complete picture as far, because it's not, the library's not- not, the library's not free, although, and you're right, in years past, Urbana Library apparently charged as well. Or when they started the Urbana Library, the donation was with the condition that it would be free to the public, because in, in years past, they did have to charge for a library. So, so anyway, just to give a complete picture of what the library budget is. And then, I, one last question, and that is, what is RFID?
RFID is a system by which we check out materials. So, as opposed to using a barcode, it's a magnetic chip-
Okay, so I use that.
-that you would find at stores and such, and we use that to, to check out.
Okay, so that is an expense for this year, I take it, or no?
Well, it's part of the processing of the materials. RFID chips are going to go into all the, into new materials to streamline the checking-out process. And so, we now have self-check systems that, if you haven't tried them, they're a lot of fun. There's three in the adult area and one in the youth area. The kids love it. And we expect that that will increase the ease of checking out for people. And it's made it a lot easier for parents to be able to check out in the youth room itself and move things ahead.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Eric.
So, this may be a terrible idea, but it was asked of me, so I'll ask it of you. Would, how bad or good would it be to transition the library funding to be completely independent of the city, so that the library would actually levy the taxpayers for the full cost of its operation? I, I guess there are some cities where that's done, and there are, I, I guess there are all kinds of different models for library funding. And we, we kind of have this mixed model, where some of it is coming from the city, some of it is coming from a tax levy that's, that goes directly to the library, and some of it comes from the foundation and the Friends. And, and do you have a, a view as to whether the funding model that we have is the best possible one, or is it just okay and we shouldn't mess with it? Or, or what do you think?
I've been here for seven weeks.
Okay.
So, if you can give me at least seven more weeks to have some more conversations, I'd be happy to answer that question.
Okay, good.
Anyone else? Mike?
I'd be glad to give my humble opinion on that.
Please do.
And that would be that I think it's a horrible idea. And here's why. The city currently subsidizes the library, but if the library were to levy its own tax to support itself, that would instantly mean that the city would have free cash. And I don't think that the city would, I don't think the city would reduce the tax burdens, burden on the, on the taxpayers of Urbana accordingly. So, my, my early-on vote here is no to that.
No.
I've been exposed.
So, one observation real quickly, I, I note that the, the photo that you use, and I'm all about photos tonight, I guess, is that despite having a half a million dollars worth of items checked out from your library, you still had shelves and shelves full of books. So, I think that's great. So, keep that up.
Come in and check out more.
It's, it's really not, well, hey, we're, we're in there regularly. My family loves the library, and it's nice to see lots of books on the shelves. So, real quick question, though. You said you've, following up on Diane's comments about your FTEs. I'm, I just want to be clear on your comments. It seemed to me that what you were saying was, and please, please correct me if I'm wrong, that you are, that, not you, but the library in essence is lagging positions, but you're going to be identifying people to fill those positions. And are you creating out-year pressure that is not reflected in this budget? In other words, you've got 50.45 FTEs in this budget, but there's going to be some lag in hiring that's of current vacancies or something? Is there going to be out-year pressure based on what you're doing this year?
So, currently, we have three full-time positions which are open. A manager of IT, which we would like to hire for first. There's a head of adult services department, sorry, director is currently open. And then, there is a full-time archivist position open. This past year, the full-time archivist position, the funds have gone to two part-time persons to give greater flexibility on the service desk. And Anka, in charge of the county archives, has said that is working well out for the scheduling. But having just hired to start this month, one full-time archivist, she wants to see, getting this new person in, what does that do with the flexibility of the library, what service can we provide? So, if we chose to not have the two part-time people, we would need to recover in the budget. We'd need to find elsewhere benefits for a full-time person, as well as the difference between the casual salaries and then a full-time person. So, we want to keep the ability to have a full-time person in that position, in case maybe next year isn't as tight, or we find enough in the funding that we could, if we have streamlined enough other operations elsewhere, we could hire a full-time person. Does that make, does that answer your question? No?
Well, kind of. I, I guess what I'm getting at is, are you going to come back next year and say, we had 50.45, but the result of our hiring decisions or our, our, the timing of the hires or that kind of thing have created an upward pressure? In other words, we, we need X amount more dollars from the city next year than this year because we did hire someone. And of course, now they're employed and the benefits and all of that. And so, we need 100,000 more because of two positions that we hired.
I understand what you're saying. The board, the library board, is fiscally responsible for the library. And so, they would choose to allow me to do this or not. And they are a group of people that you know that are fiscally responsible and try to be as streamlined as possible. So, I don't expect that we would come back to say, oh, by the way, I hired three folks, pay me for it. That is not my anticipation at all.
Okay, thanks.
I would like to say that I've visited many libraries around the country. I like to look at their libraries. I was in Miami, Florida, a huge city. And I guess it was a branch library, but it was, it was downtown. And their shelves for the periodicals were practically empty. And when you go into the Urbana Library, there is just much more material than you would find in a library in some big cities. So, I think we are very fortunate. And I do think that the library, you know, tries to be fiscally responsible.
Thank you.
So, any more questions for Celeste? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to ordinance number 2014-05-05O, or zero, rather, and ordinance reapproving a special use permit. And this is to allow construction of a multifamily residential, multifamily residential dwellings in the B3 general business zoning district. And Jeff Engstrom is here to explain this to us.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request to reapprove a special use permit, which was issued by a city council in October 2012. Under the zoning ordinance, to allow multifamily use in the B3 district, it requires a special use. In 2012, council approved the use. And the special use permits are only good for one year. So, now, Bainbridge Communities has come back. They are ready to go on the project. So, we need to just get this reapproved. The project has been slightly modified from what was approved in 2012. I want to note, it's the exact same footprint and site plan. The only differences are the number of units and the configuration of units, in terms of number of one-bedroom and four-bedroom units. Also, the level of parking has gone down a little bit. The current proposal would include a five-story building with approximately 2,000 square feet of ground floor retail space. The rest of the five stories would be 181 residential units marketed primarily towards university students. There would also be an attached five-level parking structure with 277 parking spaces. So, in comparison to what was approved in 2012, in 2012, 197 units were in the building and 350 parking spaces. So, they're reducing the number of units and the number of parking spaces. But they are increasing the number of bedrooms slightly. Previous approvals, the project was originally started in 2007 by a different developer. And they received special use approval and variances for the project. And then, the recession hit, so they were unable to make a go of it. But Bainbridge Communities came along 2012 and picked up the project. And they are ready to close and get going on the construction. And a little bit more background, in 2012, council also approved two major variances to allow the project. The variances are to reduce the required yards, the side yard and the rear yard, basically along the back where the railroad tracks are and along the back of the restaurants here, in the back of the Durst mixed-use building. Those variances are still in effect. Here's the site plan. Maybe just go through that real quick. In terms of access, there would be access to the retail parking right off of University Avenue here, to provide customers parking for the potential store or cafe there. Off of Goodwin Avenue, we would have a couple of points of access. The residents would enter the garage here on the south side and exit on the north side. Again, it's a five-story garage, 277 parking Let me, here's a view of what the site currently looks like along Goodwin Avenue. There's a vacant building. You can see the railroad tracks on the left side here, some scrub trees in the back. Along University Avenue, here's the view. It's a small frontage on University. There's this older office building, which is vacant, ready to be torn down. And here's a rendering of what the project would look like. This is an artistic rendering. It's not realistic, so the, the colors are a little bit brighter than they will be in the real, in the real construction. Couple more renderings showing some of the amenities with the park, the rooftop terrace for the residents. Here's kind of a, a long view. If the restaurants in another building weren't here, it's what it would look like. But most of this will be obscured from University Avenue by the existing restaurants and Durst Cycle Building. Let me just pull up existing uses here. You can see the site curves around from University to Goodwin Avenue. There's a Chinese restaurant and a Mexican restaurant, a mixed-use building. In the back, there's industrial uses, Ameren Station, Water Company, and the railroad tracks. And across the streets, across Goodwin, there's a parking lot and a hotel. So, really, there won't be any impacts on residents around the area. Look at the zoning. The site is zoned B3. The area is zoned B3 and industrial in general. Look at the future land use map. The site is zoned, or the future land use is designated community business in pink. But it's also near the university and a campus mixed-use area. So, the site really meets the goals of both campus mixed-use and community business. I talked about the access a little bit. They did provide a traffic impact analysis, which is something new from the previous approval. So, the city engineer has approved that. Parking, in terms of required spaces, they would be required to have the 14 retail spaces and 266 residential spaces. So, they're providing an extra 11 spaces. And it's, the new proposal is, has brought the level of the parking garage down from six levels to five levels, which will have less impact on the surrounding businesses. Fiscal impact, the construction of the project will be upwards of $30 million. Building permits, the city will receive $175,000 roughly in total. The projects will generate almost or probably about a million dollars in property taxes annually. The city will receive $130,000 roughly. The park districts will receive $114,000. And the school districts would receive over $550,000 annually. Special use permit requirements, the staff has found, and the plan commission has found, the proposed use is convenience, convenient to the, or pub, I'm sorry, conducive to the public convenience. It's not going to be injurious or detrimental to the district. And it conforms to the applicable regulations of the district, with the exception of the two variances, which were granted. Plan commission reviewed the proposal on May 8th, and they voted five to nothing to recommend that city council reapprove the special use permit with two conditions. One, that the, the project follows the site plan, which they've submitted. And the second condition, that the design and the appearance of the development shall be of a high standard of quality in substantial conformance with the illustrations. So, that is my staff report. The developers here, Representative Ron Pereira. Also, the project engineer, Don Adams, is here. They don't want to take up your time with the presentation, but they would be happy to answer questions, and so would I.
Charlie?
Yeah, Jeff, could you remind me what the, what the bedroom distribution was in the original proposal?
Um, let's see if I have it. Actually, I think it's here.
They're listed in the upper right-hand corner, though, of that-
Oh, okay.
-plan, right there, yeah.
This is the current proposal.
Right, that's the current one.
Um, I, oh, there it is, yes.
Oh.
All right, so, yes. Previously, let's see. Number beds. Okay. So, Unit A was one bedrooms. There were 23 one-bedrooms previously approved. The current proposal has eight one-bedrooms. Two bedrooms, previously 103. The current proposal only has 88 two-bedrooms. But previously, there were 74 bedrooms, and currently, there are 85 four-bedrooms.
I, I assume the developers have a business case for upping the four-bedroom apartments. I, I personally think that's a mistake. If anything, you'd go the other way around, other direction. Engineering quad, engineers tend to, and Howard Wakeland has, has done a really excellent job of keeping his, his buildings filled. And he has a lot of one-bedrooms and a handful of two-bedrooms. You also, there's also a lack of professional housing in that area, also housing for visitors to NCSA and, and the other tech-related facilities up along there. So, you know, I know there's, there's a lot of money to be made on four- So, you know, I know there's, there's a lot of money to be made on four bedrooms if you can keep them filled, but I think, I think you may be missing an opportunity to, to go after some, some people who would prefer to be in one and two-bedroom apartments.
Eric?
So I'm going to echo Charlie's concern, especially in the context that that undeveloped gravel parking is, assuming that the university goes ahead with the new plans for the medical college, that's likely to be a ver, a new building filled with university researchers. And that, and as, and this is already in addition to the research community at the Beckman Institute and the research community, NCSA. So, now, I, I think that when this idea was, was hatched, that was really before the university came forth with its plan for the expansion of the medical college. Or I, maybe, maybe I should say, maybe it's not even a plan yet, maybe it's an idea. But it certainly looks as though it's on a fast track to becoming, becoming a plan. And for a variety of reasons, the Carl Hospital has enough money sitting around to actually make it happen, should they choose to, to fund it, the major part of that. So, so I would, I, I guess I would, I guess I would urge you to... I mean, I'm not going to withhold my vote, but I would urge you to consider, in the light of the new expansion that the university has in mind for that area, what you might expect your, your, your actual occupancy to be.
Dennis?
Actually, it might be almost tempting to withhold a vote tonight because there are certain things about the building. Just the way, just the conversation that was, been brought up about the, the density of the bedroom, the number of beds in the bedrooms that are being offered here in this unit. It obviously is being geared to multiple student occupation, you know, occupancy. And I think it's totally right that, one of the things that people, at least that I've experienced, is people are looking for one bedroom, you know, single occupancy units because of their... And it would certainly bring to the community graduate students and also professional people to this building. I'm kind of, I'm a little bit concerned about, I realize that the, the property is very awkward for construction. And I don't know if we have the architect here tonight. We have an engineer and we just have a property developer, right?
Right, the architect is not here.
Yeah, it's a little unfortunate that we can't talk to that gentleman. We, what I guess I'm wondering is, the emergency vehicle accessibility. I guess it comes in, it comes in and does, it has a loop circle, which apparently a fire truck can turn around in and also, or, and also exit easily?
Uh, no.
Being a five-story building, if we had the ladder truck come into this apartment building, would there be a problem?
I don't think there's a loop, they might have to back out, but they...
The interior court of the building.
I don't know if they could make the turning radius there, but we have worked with the fire department. Maybe the chief could speak to that.
I know that we've recently allowed a similar construction to occur at Hampton, Hampton Apartments, or whatever they're called.
Yeah, we looked really closely at, at this building, and in fact, they, they elevated the entrance to allow our fire, our ladder truck to get in that. And then, at the end of that sidewalk coming from the pools, we've designed that to be able to make a three-point turnaround to get a fire truck out of there. And if you look at the west end, there's an access road that comes into the west end of the building.
Right, I see that.
And we'll have fire, access for the fire trucks there. The building's fully suppressed and has wet stand pipes, so that, that helps us with the fire protection. We've maintained a ten-foot corridor on the back of the building, so if we had to, we'd still be able to ladder the building manually. But we would be able to get a ladder truck in from the east end of the building and from the west end of the building, as far as the road goes.
So does, it's not a concern then to your department, because it is a five-story building? If there was a fire in this building, you know, in the middle of the, you know, hallways or something like that, a middle apartment and not near the end, you wouldn't have a concern about removing people safely?
Yeah, with the building being fully sprinkled, it kind of adds to the safety of the building. And it, it adds to the time to get occupants out. And then, we did, our big concern was making sure we could get a ladder truck to the east end, and we can get a ladder truck to the west end and to the east end, so. And, and we'd have to facilitate rescues from the middle if we had to do it from the outside, from the ten-foot strip of ground. But, but given the, the fully sprinkled building and the wet stand pipes, it, it really adds a degree of safety to the building.
Is ten feet safe enough distance from the building if you were to exit, if people were to exit from that, from some kind of fire event? Would they be too close to the building before, I mean, what you, what we have here is a building that's tightly, tightly wedged into its property, and if it's got a wall around it, I'm not sure we have a, I don't see a perimeter wall. I guess on the, along the, on the side, facing the south, there is, it looked like there was a perimeter wall. But, well, I guess I'm wondering is, you know, if the building's on fire, is ten feet enough space between the fire and yourself to exit without being over by heat?
No, I mean, you know, actually, you'd have to, you'd, the best means of egress would be inside the building, actually. But if we were, you know, forced to evacuate through the windows, we've left that ten-foot strip so we could work ground ladders. And obviously, if the fire was impending, you know, as soon as we would get people out of the building, we'd have to get them one direction or the other.
Right, okay. All right, I guess my next, I've got a couple of other questions, it has nothing to do with the fire now, though, thanks very much. So, if you're, I guess I was wondering about a couple of the, really about the accessibility between parking, carrying groceries to the apartment, and just general access into the building. If you were in the south corridor of Building C on your diagram, and you were bringing your groceries in, you'd only have two ways to get to your apartment, is that correct? Because there is only one access off the emergency vehicle inner court driveway. And there is an access from the parking garage. So, so to get to your apartment, you'd be carrying luggage, groceries, furniture, whatever it would be, about a block and a half to get to your room, is that correct?
I don't think it's a block and a half, but it's, there are just the two entrances, yes.
Okay. And what about the people who then live in the five-story apartment on the far east end of the complex? If you could scroll over to the far east end? So apparently, the fourteen parking spots in that entryway are not meant to be for those residents. Is that correct? That's for retail?
That's correct.
So they're parking at the far, in the parking garage?
Yes.
And so they have all invested in roller skates to get to their apartment building? From their parking place, is that correct? There are just some, there are just some logistical questions I have about facility and ease of access even to your own apartment that I think are kind of troubling, so I don't know. Okay, I have one more thing to ask. There are two retail spaces at the front that are meant to be converted into offices on the ground floor, is that correct?
On the ground floor, they will be retail.
Retail.
Yes, facing the street. Above these retail spaces, there will be other spaces, more recreational, serving the residents.
Retail, retail within these kind of complexes has always been a real challenge, and we have some, some buildings near the downtown that still don't have retail in the downstairs, maybe they have offices, I don't know. Do the developers feel that they have already, that they feel real confident they can fill those spots?
I can't speak for the developers, but I would say, in general, the city's been doing very well filling ground floor retail. Downtown, the Stratford Building is, now has a restaurant actually just opened within the last week. Down in Gregory Place, all of those retail spaces are filling up. So we think retail, especially near campus, we don't think there will be a problem filling this.
Great. Okay, I've got one other comment, but I'll wait for other people to have comments first.
Bill Brown?
Okay. And it's just a couple of questions about the layout. So would the flow in the parking lot with those angled, those angled spaces, would it be kind of circular back around the covered park, bicycle parking and back out? Or would people back out from those angled spaces and go straight back, kind of do a two-hundred-and-seventy-degree back out?
I believe it would go around, yeah.
Okay, so they'd go around, so it'd be kind of a one-way around the covered bicycle parking? It's nice to see covered bike, bicycle parking. I'm not sure that's the greatest place for it, because we do have a bike route on Goodwin that goes right by the parking garage, and the only way to get there would be to go out and use the sidewalk, I guess, on University and go across one, two, three, four, five curb cuts where there could be cars coming and going. And it's a pretty narrow sidewalk right now, are there any plans to turn that into some kind of a wider, with five hundred new people there? Would it be wise to turn that into a wider sidewalk?
We don't have any plans for that right now.
Okay. So that's just, you know, kind of a concern. I think it's, it's great that the project is, is moving forward, and an extra five hundred people should really help out the businesses in that area. Oh, is there a MTD stop there now, or would there be something there?
There would be a stop installed, right, in front of the retail.
Okay. I think that's it for now, thanks.
Anyone else? Dennis?
Yeah, all right. Yeah, so, just in, maybe on another topic, well, I'll go back to one topic. I would really advise that there be another access into the building near the west end of the building, so that people can come and go, perhaps even down to the, what looks like to be a pool in the center of the court yard. There are so, the, the southern long access of the building has only one entrance and exit. And it just seems to be kind of fraught with danger for people who want to come and go into the building. And very inconvenient, and it would seem worthwhile to consider sacrificing a one-bedroom apartment to add some kind of other access into the building. I would think it would be a safety concern, actually. And my last, my last thought would be that this building, I really appreciate the fact that this, this piece of property is finally being developed, and I think it's a useful thing for the, for the city. But it's a real, in my mind, a real lost opportunity as far as quality of design and aesthetics. If you look at the facade that's facing, facing the street, I don't understand what this architecture is, what school of architecture I'm, I'm, I'm looking at. It doesn't, I don't see any relationship to any kind of like, I don't know, composure, composition, aesthetic, other than, you know, I don't know, shoebox glue construction. Every single window is a different size and shape. Some of the, there are parts to it that are, you know, discontinuous from the rest of the design. And some of the design that sets up a certain kind of regularity along the back and the less, and the less frontal aspects of the building actually do have rhythmical, balanced, sequential pattern, which sets up at least a harmony in the building. But when you get to the facade, it's all lost in a jumble of what I would call kind of like lost modernism. And I realize that, that there are certain buildings that are built on campus today that must come from the same school, where you have windows without any detailing, so there's not any kind of trimming or architectural features, except that the window is stuck into the wall. You got random patterning going on and various materials being applied in asymmetrical and uncoordinated kind of ways. And the result, I think, is, is kind of like a, I don't know, post-modern confusion. You know, and the addition of like angled, angled frontises or porches or whatever, or canopies don't add to any, just add to the confusion visually. So, to me, this building looks like it's divided into two, and on the right-hand side, you have what looks like it could be a very handsome apartment building or hotel. But over the entrance and the commercial side, it becomes a confusion of imagery. So, while that's the choice of the people who've designed this building, and if they think this is great architecture, I'd like to know where their architect went to school. I don't quite catch, catch the style that's supposed to be happening here. But if you're satisfied with it, that's fine. But, but this building, to me, is a, suggests to us as a council members that we really do need to establish design guidelines, suggestions, or a design overlay for not only the downtown, but for important corridors of the city, so that at least there can be some harmony of design that's consecutive and, and useful to the community and to the aesthetics of the city. It's, it's interesting to be innovative or unique, but it's so easy to become unique in the negative sense of being, you know, not so, not so very beautiful after all. So, there are buildings across the street, Beckman Hall, and there's, you know, the, the Ikenberry Commons Residence Halls on the campus, and the development of Gregory Place one and two. And also, the building that's on the corner of Lincoln and University, which is called Lincoln University Holdings. This is where Einstein Bagel is and Carl Development Foundation offices are. That, that are very handsome buildings that are well-thought-out and express, in a modern way, some of the, some of the basic principles of, of architecture, which I wish that might be applied more readily to even these new buildings, which apparently just have more of a temporary commercial interest.
Okay. Carol, I think, was next, and then Eric.
I just want to ask a long-term plan, if either Libby or you could give to us the portion of this that is north on the map, Exhibit C. I'm interested in getting the narrative that describes this area in the two thousand and five comprehensive plan. And just a quick answer as to why this was not approved? I don't understand why we have this being re-approved again. It expired, but there was some, some, something that facilitated expiration.
No, no, it's actually just written into the zoning ordinance. Special use permits expire within one year if there's not...
If they don't use it at the time.
Yeah, there's no building permit issued.
Eric?
So I, I want to preface my remarks by saying that I have great respect for Dennis. He's one of the most diligent people on this council. But I completely disagree with him about the architecture. Every time I go to Chicago and I drive, you know, up the highway and I see that magnificent skyline of... and I see that magnificent skyline of very, very, very different shapes and structures, I am so grateful that there was not a Chicago bureaucracy that had to approve these. And I, I think the design is, I, I like, it has to me a playful aspect that I really like. So, you know, just one person's opinion, but that's my opinion.
Okay, anyone else? We have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, motion by Madigan, seconded by Ammons, is that correct? Okay. Any other discussion?
I'm sorry, the applicant would like to make a statement.
Okay. We would love to hear from the applicant.
Yes.
Hello. Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Ron Pereira and I'm with the Bainbridge Companies. As Mr. Engstrom said, we are applying for a reapproval of our previously approved special use permit. We are anxious and excited to get this project started after some delays. And we are hoping to break ground, close on the land, middle of June and break ground by the end of June or early July. I'd like to address, first of all, I have to apologize. I don't have a long history with this project. I've been assigned to it fairly recently. But I'll try to address some of the comments as best I can. Regarding the design, the building is, is primarily geared towards students. Our customers here will, will mostly be in their early twenties. So I think Mr. Jacobson hit the nail on the head. The building really has to be fun. It has to be modern and it has to be, to a certain extent, cutting edge. There's approximately 13,000 square feet of amenity space for the residents in the building, which is a huge, huge common area. And, and there's things such as a two-level fitness center, game room, theater room, plenty of study rooms as well. So the building is highly amenitized and will, will suit the customer well. At the same time, we certainly don't want to build a building that's garish or gaudy. That's the last thing we want to do here. Our projects are extremely well-received in all the markets where we've built them. In a lot of cases, our projects command top of the market rents. And I expect the same to happen here. Regarding some of the paint colors, the artist's rendering is, it's, it's a concept. The colors oftentimes appear a little bit glossy or bright. Prior to putting paint on large sections of the building, we'll test it on smaller sections and have the architect look at it and others. And we'll, we'll have a, have a sign off before applying it to huge portions of the building. The lot is, is cut up, as you can see. It was a very challenging and, and odd-shaped parcel to design around. The building's not perfect. I think we did a good job with the constraints that we were, you know, we're presented with for this site. The units on the east side of the building do have a fairly long way to go to the garage. But the offset to that is that the, the 13,000 square foot amenity area is on that side of the building as well. So to get to the fitness center, study rooms, game rooms, lounges and other things, it's, it's a very short distance. The project has been slightly delayed and the reason for that has primarily been construction costs. With the uptick in the economy, subcontractors around the country have gotten extremely busy. Labor and materials have gone up, in the past 18 months, have gone up significantly. When we first made the building permit application in December of 2012, our hard costs were listed on the application at about $30.6 million. The, the general construction contract that we're hopefully about to execute is for $36 million. So we've had a run-up in, in hard costs of about 20% in that short timeframe. And so we've had to do several things to, to the building to get the, get the budget in, in order to a, to a place where we could build it. And so some of that value engineering included removing the, the, the lighthouse feature on the roof of the building. There was also a kind of an industrial-looking sign on the top of the building, which we've removed. And we've also eliminated some of the unnecessary parking, being that, being that the project is immediately adjacent to campus. So we've streamlined the building a little bit, value engineered it. And at this point, we're, we're ready to start construction. Happy to answer any questions you may have. And we look forward to, look forward to completing the project.
Charlie Smythe.
Two questions for you, thank you. Will there be bicycle parking in the garage itself?
We can add additional parking. I don't know off the top of my head if it's planned there or not. But if there's space for bicycle parking, we can add more in the garage.
Yeah, because I was going to say is that the bike path is on Goodwin.
Yeah.
And so it's a pretty good one, especially once you get south of Springfield.
Bike racks are, are fairly, fairly easy to do if there's space in the, in the garage and a place to put them where they'll be out of the way of the cars, we, we can add them. If they're not there already, again, I apologize, I don't know. I know we have a covered bicycle parking space. I don't know off the top of my head if you have additional in the garage.
Like, as Bill pointed out, it's just not in a place that bicycles will use, bicyclists will use. They're going to use it where they, where they get in and out at. And, and otherwise you're going to be having bicycles on the sidewalks on a, on a, on a very narrow sidewalk to boot. The other question is, I just, I'm just having a very hard time understanding the preponderance of four-bedroom apartments. I know that, you know, a lot of times it's, it's for unrelated people that get these. And it's currently making money. We've got a glut of them in the community. I just don't see how you're going to make money at it and have them, how they're going to be filled. Or it's going to end up with, you know, the further, the further our, the apartment buildings with the furthest away with their four-bedroom setups, those are the ones that are going to suffer.
Yeah, so a lot of the newer, more modern student housing projects around the country have a vast majority of four-bedroom, four-bath units. They are significantly cheaper to rent than the smaller, more private units. And in our experience in, in other markets, and actually in what we've observed now in two years in this market as well, there is a significant need and a market for the cheaper four-bedroom, four-bath units. We've seen in other projects for this university, interestingly enough, the four-bed and, and one-bed units are the ones that lease up first. And it's the, the two-bedroom units that are taking a little bit longer to lease up. Now, the difference in, in price is significant. We have the four-bedroom, four-bath units penciled in at about $950 per bed, which is about on par with, again, some of the other projects in the area. However, even some of the newer projects here are not providing a ratio of one bed to, one bath to one bed. Some of the newer projects have, for instance, four-bed, two-bath units. So we see a market for the four-bedroom units. And I, I think we've underwritten the rents fairly conservatively in them. By way of example, the one-bedroom units, for the lucky few who get to live by themselves, there's only eight of them, but we have them penciled in at around $1,300 a month. So that's a difference of $350 a month.
Yeah, I just, like, my point was that there are graduate students and, and professionals that might want to live here and would be willing to pay that price. And, and that's why I said, you know, I, I'm going to assume you've studied the market and looked at graduate students and, and professionals in the mix. But it just strikes me that there's an opportunity there that's, that's being overlooked.
Okay, Dennis.
Yeah, hi, Ron.
Hi.
I see access to the upper stories at most of the ingress locations seem to be stairwells. I see one, I see one definitely, I see one elevator, which I recognize as being at this location.
Correct.
Is there an elevator then for, that serves this five-story unit?
Yeah, there are actually two elevators in that portion of the building because of a lot of the leasing activity and tours occurs over there. And there's an elevator on the garage side as well.
And do you feel that just having an entrance into the building from here and here satisfies the need to come and go in this area of the corridors? Have you thought about, you know, whether there should be one more access to the outside here and another stairwell?
Yeah, I mean, we feel that, again, it's a long, it is a long run down that corridor, but we feel that the access is, is okay.
Yeah, you can ask that, ask us the parking garage, yeah. It depends on where you can park in the parking garage too, doesn't it, I suppose, and what level. To ex, to go across this corridor that crosses the drive that leads into the central court area, it says that there are units above. So this is actually, this, this passageway is on the second floor? Or is it on the third floor?
Yeah, that's, that's the corridor. So it's, it's an enclosed corridor and there's a, a part of the building that, that bridges over that.
Is that on a second floor or a third floor?
I believe that's on the third floor.
Because you, you allowed a larger opening for, so the fire trucks go through.
Correct.
Right. Okay, and that's, you think this is going to work, huh?
Absolutely. It's right next to campus.
Okay, and I would still advise you to, I don't know, I would just, being playful and being, being, having a playful facade, it may work, but I'd really like to hear from your architects. I'd like to know what school of architecture this is considered. And I, because I can't identify it. And it would seem interesting that there's so many new playful buildings being built today where the history of architecture seems to have been lost. Maybe they don't, maybe there's not a class that teaches proportion the same way that we learned it when I was in school.
Okay. Anyone else? Well, we have a motion by Madigan, seconded by Ammons. Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Not a very enthusiastic yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance number 2014-05-051, and ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for fiscal 2013-14. And this is for Olympian Drive Construction Engineering 2014. And Bill Gray, Public Works Director and City Engineer, is here.
Thank you. Here we have another agreement with a consulting engineer and subconsulting engineers to provide the construction engineering services for the $7 million construction of Olympian Drive between Apollo and Lincoln Avenue. The agreement is with IDAT. IDAT will be reimbursing the city, the funds expended. Right now, those fees are somewhere a little under $800,000. But just to be safe with any contingency, I'm recommending a budget amendment ordinance of $850,000. 100% of these expenses will be reimbursed. And it's through a form of, using Illinois Jobs Now money and Grade Crossing Protection Fund money from the Illinois Commerce Commission. So those are the two funding sources. The agreement is before you and recommend its approval.
Charlie?
Yeah, Bill, I hate to raise this, but I've got to. Now, I assume all the legal, all the legal hurdles have been jumped? All the, all, everything's basically ready to go? There's no further opposition we have to deal with on this? Or is there some last-ditch effort being made by the people opposed to this?
I'm not aware of any last-ditch efforts. We're waiting any day on a railroad agreement. And we're waiting any day for an Ameren utility relocation agreement. But those are more standard procedures.
Okay, then, yeah, so, you know, the, originally this was, was, there's to be a connection to Lincoln Avenue here. Stop signs make absolutely no sense at this location. It's a perfect place for roundabout. And I'm going to just raise that again because it's a waste of gas. It's going to be noisy with the trucks that are going north on, north and south around that intersection as they come in from the interstate or move from one side of town to the other. And it behooves me to understand why anyone would want to hear the sound of brakes and acceleration when we could have simply a, simply a controlled round, modern roundabout at this intersection that would alleviate most of those concerns. Is there any way to go back and visit that silly removal and get a roundabout back into this, into the design?
It, it was the county board, right, that wanted us to agree? So we'd have to start all over again, which I think is a little bit late.
Yeah, I mean, you would build the project, complete the project, finalize the project. And, you know, one or more years later, you could rebuild the intersection in a roundabout. That would be the solution.
When you built Lincoln? When you, when, when Lincoln gets rebuilt?
No, the roads would have to be done, the county-city agreements would have to be fulfilled. The city would own and have the jurisdiction of both roads sometime, say, 2017 onwards. And then there could be some reconstruction some later period of time.
Is there a, a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make that. Bruce, I'd like to make a comment.
Is there, okay, let's get a second.
Second.
Okay, motion by Roberts, seconded by Marlin. Mr. Roberts?
Yeah. I look forward to this connectivity between Lincoln and Olympian Drive. And in today's paper, there was an excellent example of why we want this connectivity. As they're going to be reconfiguring and repaving the off-ramp westbound from I-74 to northbound I-57 to Chicago, which is probably the direction that 90% of the people who are on that highway try to take, while that ramp is being reconstructed or rebuilt or repaved, the IDAT is the, you know, the, the, the traffic is going to be routed southbound on 57. I don't know how many miles to the exit, the closest exit. Asked to go across the bridge and go northbound again, just to go north to Chicago. Now, if they were really smart, they'd reroute them up, up Cunningham Avenue to Rantoul. But that's not a really clean connection either. So people are going to be going loops to go north instead of making a right-hand turn and going north. I don't know, I don't know, weak. Several loops, up and down and all around. If this bridge over the railroad track were built and this connectivity was already done, it would be such an easy shot and they would actually save miles of travel. Maybe four, maybe seven miles of travel out of the way to go northbound to Chicago. This will happen again because someday they're going to be wanting to reconfigure that interstate, interstate connection. And this connectivity is going to become one of the most vital routes to the north that we can have in this community. And I think we're going to see a lot of development along it ultimately. So, I mean, I'm a person who believes that if ultimately this, the connectivity needs to go clean-
So, I mean, I'm a person who believes that if ultimately the connectivity needs to go clean over to Cunningham Avenue. But this is going to be great. I'm so glad this is finally happening. One almost dared to think it could happen in my lifetime, but it is. So I congratulate us. And as a matter of fact, we even, like, worked through the best route to reroute Lincoln north to the satisfaction of the property owners on whose property it goes through. So I give us great kudos, and I give IDOT great kudos, and the planning division's great kudos. And I'm happy to have made a motion that this should be happening.
Anyone else? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Enthusiastic, yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing? Yes. That motion carries. Hallelujah. Okay, next we have Resolution Number 2014-05-026R, a resolution authorizing entering into an execution of construction engineering services agreement for Illinois Jobs Now Funds and Grade Crossing Protection Funds. And this is the construction engineering services agreement for the Olympian Drive project.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Marlin. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Finally, ordinance number 2014-05-052, an ordinance amending Urbana Bicycle Master Plan, and this is for Broadway Avenue between Washington Street and Illinois Street, which is to formalize, I think it was called Option Four.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Diane?
I just wanted to read for the public who are interested in what this new version says and the pertinent part is. One, Section One, the Urbana Bicycle Master Plan be amended to change that portion of Broadway Avenue running between Washington Street and Illinois Street from a street with specifically designated bicycle lanes for travel to a street which is designated and marked as a bicycle route with shared lane pavement marking. And the City of Urbana indicates on either side of the aforementioned portion of Broadway Avenue via a solid white longitudinal line the areas where vehicles are permitted to park.
Okay. Anyone else? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes, and good work.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.